Board on your end.
Yes, we are.
Okay, Commissioners, are we ready to move forward on your end?
Yes.
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 Terrific.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, everybody for your patience. Here we go. So at this time, I will call to order the town in Emmitsburg meeting for Monday, April 5th, 2021. At this time, I'll ask you to please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. So here we go. I pledge allegiance of the United States and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to take a look at our agenda. I'm moving from our agenda, so folks at home know where we're going. We have a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. That will occur at 22 East Main Street. It will also be available by Zoom. Okay, the town council meeting will occur, sorry, our next town council meeting, pardon me, will occur Monday, April 19th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. This will also be on Channel 99 and Zoom. Okay, that will be our second meeting this month. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, April 26th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. That will also be available via Zoom. The town council meeting in May will occur on May 3rd at 7:30 PM. And again, that will be available via Channel 99 and via Zoom. Now we turn to the meeting, our meeting items. Our first item, A, approve the minutes for the March 1st, 2021 meeting. Does anybody have any modifications or concerns to edit or add to that, those minutes?
Mr. President, I had one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ritz.
This was regarding my Commissioner comments on page three.
Okay.
Wherein it states that I encouraged everyone to be friendly and to reach out to their neighbors. I would say, yes, I did imply that. However, I did want to specifically call out Mr. Terry Shern for being a good example of a good neighbor.
Terrific. Okay, so we will modify that as stated.
Commissioner Ritz, can you spell his last name?
Absolutely. S H E R N.
Okay, are there any other, sorry, are there any other enhancements or modifications or edits that we would like to see come forward on the minutes from that last meeting on March 1st? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes as modified?
I'll make a motion to accept the town meeting minutes from March as modified.
Thank you. All right, is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
Second motion.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Did I hear that correctly? Oh, Commissioner Sweeney, my apologies.
Commissioner Burns.
Commissioner Burns, okay, wow. Thank you, sir. Motion made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, anyone against? No opposition. The motion carries five to zero. We now turn to Deputy White House for our police report.
Good evening, everyone. Deputy White House, Frederick County Sheriff's Office with the March Town Report. Let's see, not an overall, not a real busy month. Twenty-six traffic stops with the traffic arrests. Let's see here, I attended the meeting last month. I assisted in the parade for the Mount St. Mary's men's basketball team through town and out to the university. That was actually a lot of fun. Had a lot of fun doing that. Let's see here, some additional information, I had a day of court. We had fourteen request officer calls. Those are just various calls in nature where someone just wants to call from a deputy. No specific really reason that, any reason to know what they were on here or anything. So did, we also did several school safety checks. I guess the biggest thing I want to hit on here tonight is there's been a couple frauds in the town. So anytime somebody calls and asks you to put money like on an eBay card or a green dot money card, anything like that, if somebody calls you and says, hey, I got this great, great idea, I got something great for you. The only catch is you gotta go put some money on this card, then you call me back with the card number. Those are scams. I know there was a gentleman in this, in this, this past month, about three weeks ago, who was out about $1,600. I guess he saw something on Craigslist. And then they wanted him to go, go get some eBay, I guess eBay cards, put various amounts of money on them. So now this gentleman is out $1,600. If anybody calls you claiming that your relative is in jail and you, you need to put up the bail money. I know there was a call in the county last month. It was somewhere north of $10,000. What these people do is they call older people and they will say, like, your grandson or your granddaughter is in jail. You need to post their bail or, you know, or they're going to be committed here at the jail. So these people will run out and this one gentleman put over $10,000 on, you know, I forget what kind of card that it was for the quote unquote bail. So he calls the people back and he gives them the money and then it finds out a little bit later that's a scam. So this guy's out $10,000. This is money that's not going to be refunded by your bank. This money is gone. So if anybody calls anybody asking for money, if you want to just hang up, if you want to call us, you want to send us an email to see, you know, if we've had anything like that, or if it's, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll talk with you and we'll come by. I just don't want anybody to be out these large, these large amounts of money when it could be avoided. So if there's somebody, talk with them. Let them know what's going on and just contact us. So, sorry, that was a little long, but I wanted to stress the point. I don't want these, I don't want people being out a bunch of money. So that's it for me. Is there anything, anybody, any, has any questions for me or anything at this point?
Okay, it doesn't sound like we have any questions for you, Deputy. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your concern for advising the community about these scams. Okay, so we'll move on to our next agenda item from our meeting items. We turn to the Town Manager's report. Thank you, Deputy.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's report for February of 2021. I'll highlight some key areas. Related to streets, staff and contractors came in for several snow events in February. Staff repaired and replaced some streetlights around town. Related to parks, contractor installed a new section of fence at Ball Field Number Six in Memorial Park that was damaged during the windstorm. For water, Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. Roughing filters are being washed two times a day. However, we started the month in February at four. Then you'll see the well depths for February. Water production, we produce an average of 213,667 gallons per day, consumed an average of 199,374 for backwash difference of 12.5%. We purchased 400,000, 200 gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's in the month of February. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 777,000 gallons and consumed 199,307, which meant 74% of the wastewater treated in February was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of February. However, we did exceed the design capacity nine times in the month of February. It was mostly due to the amount of rain that was received. We received 3.6 inches of precipitation. We currently, well, at the end of February, we had a precipitation surplus of 1.24 inches over the last six months. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of April. You'll see, I highlighted some meetings that I attended in February. Some noteworthy items, staff responded to a damaged fire hydrant due to a tractor trailer collision. I believe that was in Silo Hill. A staff repaired several leaks, one on Timber Mill Run at West Main, one on Annandale Road and one in the 300 block of North Seaton Avenue. The one, a water leak on Timber Mill Run was a large leak. We estimated between those three leaks, we lost about 314,000 gallons. The two-inch blow-off on Mount St. Mary's line was found to be leaking. That's been repaired. Well, number three ran the entire month of February. It was very helpful in lowering the pH. And then staff replaced three blow-off valves that the bolts were rusting off of. Staff's currently working on, we're aware of the streetlights being out on the south side of West Main Street from Federal Recreemery Road. We are working on that. All the bathrooms in the parks are open for the season and staff will begin mowing this week. And that should highlight everything from a manager's report.
Any questions for the Town Manager?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Kathy, when, when they, do they still sterilize the park equipment?
Yes.
When they do the park equipment, can they sterilize the bathroom too at the same time? Just spray it down?
I will have to check with staff if it's, the stuff works the same in the bathrooms, but I'll, I'll check, I'll look into that.
Okay, because I know with the, with the lily gum, we use them a lot here. I didn't know if you want to sterilize them, at least, at least when they do the park equipment, they could do it at the same time.
Right. Yeah, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Any more questions or any other questions for the Town Manager related to the report? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Town Planner's report.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. This is the Planner's Report for February 2021. I'll highlight a few key items.
Mr. Golden, I'm going to ask you to speak up a little bit if you could, please.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, no problem. I worked on the 21-03, 04, 05, and 06. 03 and 04 you'll see tonight and we'll put the other ones on their schedule later date. Under grants, for Community Legacy Grant Management for fiscal year 20 and 21, under 21, processed a lot of applications. We did allocate those funds on the 24th with the Sustainable Work Group. So at this time, the application period has ended. You can reapply for grant funds next year and around January.
Excuse, excuse me, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Zach, could you just speak, I've got a little echo effect. Could you please? Can you please, hello?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a suggestion based on what the mayor is observing. If folks who have joined the meeting have
Doing a good job, Zach. Just can't hear.
I'll make a suggestion based on what the mayor is observing. If folks who are here for a meeting have their link, their Zoom link unmuted, if they could please mute their link and that way we could eliminate the echo. And I think everyone, from what I'm viewing, has so far. Mr. Golden, we're still having a little trouble hearing you, so you're really going to have to speak with a booming voice if you could.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yep.
That's much better, Zach.
Much better.
Okay, I'll, I'll restart Community Legacy. Right now, for Community Legacy 21, our grant applications, we received those and we reviewed those with the Sustainable Work Group on the 24th. To date, we do, we are closed, so you'll have to resubmit in 2022. With Caspi Bay Trust Grant Management, we're going to be talking about the North Seaton Avenue Green Street conceptual plant tonight and also Rain Barrel Program. We have Rain Barrel still for sale. And I also assisted the Town Manager with the required documentation for the state water clarifier grant. Under MS4, we're continuing to working on our Silo Hill Stormwater Basin retrofit project and also the tree planting management project. Under permits and zoning, we processed seven zoning permit applications this month for seven homes in Brookfield. So far this year, we've processed 15 new home permits in Brookfield and also one in South Gate. Processed four backflow preventer applications. I worked with Frederick County and Lions Club on approval of the community park building permit for the shed. Responded to various incident reports under Planning Commission. We're still working with rudders. We just finished out the Insurance Brokers of Maryland today. Miss B's Childcare, I worked on that in February. Irish Town Road Improvement Plan, also the Townwide ADA Ramp. Federal Stone and Emmitsburg East Industrial Park Two Project Management. I reviewed a plan for mayor and the Planning Commission Chairman's signatures. I continue to answer questions from potential developers on Emmett Ridge to Fraley Farm and McNair Property. As you can see in that list, we attended the Town Manager and the mayor and I attended various conference calls regarding some of those projects this month. I worked with the Creamery Road Pump Station Engineer for improvement plat requirements. We had a, Kathy and I attended a virtual Planning Commission training on the 24th. I completed and submitted the 2024 Conservation Act Report. And I also started processing a comprehensive plan amendment to Chapter Three. Miscellaneous Stan 6, 7, 11 Forestry Project Management and also I applied for the annual ENS Erosion sediment control permit for the town stockpile yard. And that's everything, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Are, are there any questions for the Town Planner at this time? Mr. Golden, one item for myself. How many applications for the Community Legacy Heritage Grants have been submitted? For the next round, I guess, for, for this current round, I guess.
It was, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it was less than 10, a little less than 10.
Great, okay, thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions for the Town Planner? Okay, hearing none. We move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Burns?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to follow up on a couple items. Number one, I did see, we discussed back in March about the need for improvement in our school system, especially if there's going to be more homes being built and more families moving in. And through emails with staff and the mayor, there's, there is now interest, let's say, within Frederick County School Board to understand that there is going to be development up here. There are going to be new homes. And that they should now start focusing on the school here in the Northern County. And then one follow-up item, I think that's something we need to discuss and will be brought up here in the near future, but I want to go on record now, is our water and sewer fees. Doing the research that I have, I know we started, I started this back last year and then have been following up more recently. We in Emmitsburg have some of the lowest water fees in the county. Our sewer fees aren't necessarily the lowest. They rank right there in the middle, but our water fees are lower than almost anybody in the county. I have yet to find anybody that's lower. But with all this work that needs to be done on the water clarifiers and everything else, I think there's going to have to be some hard discussions on how our sewer fees are going to shape up as well as our water feeds in the near future. So I just wanted to put it out there now that this is probably a discussion that needs to be had. I think staff's aware of it. I think all the commissioners are aware and I think a lot of people in town are aware of it as well. But one of the things I think we need to start recognizing is we do have very low water fees in comparison to everywhere else in the county. And I think we might have to get on board and try to come more towards the median of everywhere else to hopefully help us with the extra money needed for the water, water clarifier and everything else, the wastewater treatment part. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis, any comments, sir?
Oh, yeah, just real quickly, the Parks Committee got, got together and did a walkthrough of the Myers Memorial Park two Saturdays ago. As a matter of fact, the park was full, playgrounds and baseball fields and everything. It was great to see. There's a lot of upgrades coming to the park. So if any of our citizens have any ideas, please get back to us and let us know what you'd like to see and we'll try to keep you all up to date on all the new stuff coming. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ritz?
Oh, yeah, my wife, kids, and I were playing outside on Saturday and happened to look up, we saw a bald eagle flying over North Seaton Avenue. It was quite impressive. Just to see that. I received a call from a concerned resident on West Lincoln due to the amount of accumulated trash in that area, including a mattress. And there are people that are putting their trash bags out unsecure well before trash pickup night, which is in violation of town code. And they did ask me a great question. Is there any way we can look into potentially providing town supplied trash cans? I know that other municipalities do this, but of course, those municipalities have larger budgets than we do. But maybe it's something that we can consider in the future. And then I know that we all received an email from the current owner and actually the current seller of 502 East Main Street due to some financial situations and an opportunity. Unfortunately, that daycare will be moving to Thurmont. But it does appear that the neighbor to that property is, well, for one thing, being less than neighborly, living adjacent to a commercial entity. However, our current zoning does allow for that. So I would hope that as a town, we would follow what we're, what we're what we do always here and that you, you can't bend the rules for one when, otherwise you're going to have to bend them for everybody, especially when we're trying to promote business growth rather than deter, deterring it. So unfortunately, the daycare won't be going in that, in that building, but whatever does move into that property, hopefully it goes off smoothly. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney?
Um, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. President, you're muted.
Oh, okay. Better, sorry.
There you go.
Not very clever, my apologies. So I did attend the Frederick County Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Essentially, there, there will be new signs introduced regarding sharing the road. I've heard from a number of people who've weighed in regarding concerns about the process of the potential for annexation. I have asked the mayor and staff if they could come forward at a future time with a fairly clear graphic organizer to give our folks opportunity or the, a way to see the opportunities they have, and there are many of them, to weigh in on the possibility of that type of growth, whether they are for it or against it. The opportunity does exist through the process, but also through contacting any commissioner. So I really want people to understand we're, we're here to listen and to accept your input. I heard a number of inquiries, sorry, an inquiry related to the HOA at Pembroke Woods and their responsibilities. Staff was very helpful in getting me the information I needed for them. I responded to inquiries related to the Brookfield HOA status. Brookfield does not have an HOA yet because it didn't have sufficient houses. I think they're probably approaching that tipping point with 15 new homes being built. So that's a pretty positive thing. I responded to concerns related to rental properties. I've heard that a few times, well, sorry, more than a few times, concerns about rental properties and absentee owners. So that seems to be percolating up with the warm weather as well. I've responded to inquiries related to the possibility of town growth. And again, I, I did make that request of the mayor and staff, so hopefully that'll be coming forward soon, I hope. The five commissioners, there are five of us and, you know, some are newer to the community, some are legacy families representing. And I, I hope everybody in town feels comfortable in contacting either the mayor or commissioner to share their concerns and their hopes for the town. So please feel free to use us. We, we do want to hear from you. And, and we do want to, you know, weigh what you have to say, regardless of the topic. More or less, we're here to advocate for you. So please be mindful of that. Our town committees do need volunteers, but also the county has committees that also need volunteers and it would be great if we had some advocates for Emmitsburg and the North County on these county committees. And finally, I'll, I'll end on my, you know, Carthago de Linda-esque. We absolutely need to have pedestrian connections between the town, the university and the future regional park. And on that, I end my comments and we go forward for the mayor and the mayor's comments. Mr. Mayor, it's yours, sir.
Me, thank, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. We had a teleconference with D H Horton, Town Planner, and Miss Gold to myself on March 3rd. March 4th, COVID update with Shannon Moore, manager of the Sustainability and Environmental Resources Office of the County Executive. She was our guest on our podcast. March 9th, Fisher Davis and I toured Brunswick Regional Park. March 10th, 4:30, Parking Enforcement Officer Amy Nail and I took the town electric vehicle and joined the parade for welcoming the Mount Rugby Team back, back in. It was really a lot of fun and a lot of spirit and good fraternity. Conference call with County Executive and mayors on March 11th, COVID-related. March 11th, COVID update video we had here, Mark Lancaster, former chairman of the Board of Frederick County Sustainability Commission and also a well-knowned green builder in the county about what's, what's coming around a little bit more focus with sustainability department manager and Mark here on understanding what Green New Deal means. We've done a lot and we'll just see what we have to do next. The Town Planner and I spoke with a broker for the potential development of the Fraley Project. March 18th, Goodsoils Farm, Keysville Road. Many of you sign up and get their fresh vegetables and they're also here at the farmer's market and a St. Joseph's Feast Day blessing on March 19th, March 18th, I think. That's the right date. March 26th, attended virtual meeting with gray, gray to green. And again, I'll just get more understanding about what this Green New Deal it means. Tended virtual Sustainability in Maryland Executive Committee meeting, which I remember on Friday afternoon, March 26th. And March 31st, virtual sustainability new action webinar, bicycle friends to the community. And it's something that, now that we are well-connected, we can do more and we're going to do more, but it's a time maybe to look at the French enticement of a, of biking a little bit more. I, I am on the Maryland Energy Siding Steering Committee. I am the MML rep and we had a meeting on March 11th. If I could just go over a couple of quick things. Our staff, led by Planner Zach Gold, obtained a 600 route and we got, received $685,000 grant from, that's $685,000 plus from the Community Development Block Grant Foundation. I thank our planner and everybody that worked with him. It's really spectacular. We have been approved for a million dollars for the clarifier. It is officially in the state budget and a lot of our thanks goes to Senator Howe. He really led the charge on this and worked with our staff, our Town Manager and, and it really was, that's a good thing to have. With the potential growth, we keep hearing about all these annexations that might be happening, what's going to happen? They've been bouncing off this, some annexations for about six months, but they're always a different person. So we need some vetting out time on, on these and to see where they really lie. And then we do have something that all developers need. We have water and sewer taps. And there's demand for them right now. About three weeks ago, I, I decided I'd like to write a letter to the Board of Education concerning our school. If we have all this development coming our way, we need a, a school here and If we have all this development coming our way, we need a school here and and more money toward it and guarantees. And so I sent an email to him. I couldn't figure out how to be on there zoom like maybe many of you all were sharing tonight and and immediately they got back to us and we are putting a letter together. Couple of commissioners. Fisher Burns, all of you asked what do we do about the school? And so we are writing a letter. They they're a little surprised about this development up here if any of this comes about. We're pretty sure all the forty forty houses with Ryan are going to come about. But everything else is up in the air and we'll go from there. We have have somebody on from D H Horton later at night, maybe they'll express some things we can go from, but thank you for your time. I'm sorry, Commissioner Donald, thank you much for your time.
No, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving forward. I will need some assistance from staff. I suspect we have at least one person signed up for public comment. However, I don't know if we have more. Ms. Willetts? Or I guess Ms. Shaw, do we have parties signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have two. We have Liz Buckman. And then we have Ronald Lind that signed up for public comment.
Okay, we'll go in that order. Ms. Buckman, welcome. I'll remind everybody. When you when you speak in public comment, please identify yourself. Please give us your home address. And when you're addressing your comments, please direct them to the the board and the mayor. So Ms. Buckman, you have the floor for five minutes should you need it. Ms. Buckman, I don't know if you're muted or not. Hey. We can see you, but I can't hear you. Ms. Buckman, I'm sorry. There you are. Yes, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So my name is Elizabeth Buckman. I live at one sixteen South Seaton Avenue, Emmitsburg, Maryland. And I am here communicating to you as a citizen of the town of Emmitsburg. I am upset about the email interactions that I have shared with the Board of Commissioners. And I feel the larger issue is the fact that you can see in the email exchange that Kathy, the town manager, accused the deputies of putting me on a CC for this email when in fact was Kathy who did do this. Her insinuation that she made between the sheriff's office could elicit an adverse working relationship between the town and the sheriff's department. This is not the first time Kathy has made derogatory comments regarding me. But this is the first time I have been CC'd on the comments. I feel that it is inappropriate for her to make derogatory comments to a third party regarding any of our citizens. And I would like a public apology for that derogatory comment. And one for the sheriff's deputies because she was the one to release the email. I believe that this is actually a systemic issue with the town of Emmitsburg. And it should be addressed so that these occurrences do not continue. The town staff is representative of all of the Board of Commissioners who have been elected. They should be representing you in a way that holds to the highest standard. And then furthermore, Deputy Ahal has been sadly missed and both him and White House were such a good collaborative team. And the town has shared and is feeling his loss. They both exemplify what should be a small town deputies. So many people are asking about how we can get him back. He really did make a difference in our community. And that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Buckman. That's appreciated. Mr. Lind, yes, sir.
Hey, good evening, Mayor President O'Donnell and council members. My comments are just about, I think it's number seven about Emmett Ridge two. So I don't know if the comments should be directed now or to Zach and Mr. Horton when they speak about Emmett Ridge two.
Okay, thank you, sir. Definitely, if you could, if you have the time and you can stay. Once we hear the information from the presentation, we'll have time for what will we have public comment at that time also. Is that okay? Do you have the ability to hold on?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, so we'll come back to you, sir, at that time. And thank you. I appreciate you coming to our meeting this evening.
Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up after Ms. Buckman's comments, just to make sure. The as we were all copied on that. The situation with the deputies, the deputies, I was curious as to like, have we have any more follow up regarding that email communication?
Commissioner Ritz, I have spoken to the deputies individually and communicated what had occurred and offered my apologies to them.
And then going forward, what are we doing about Ms. Buckman's concern regarding herself and or other residents of town with within town official town communication?
I am not aware of any other issues outside of Ms. Buckman that have been brought to my attention. So if there are other public concerns regarding how staff treats them, they need to be brought to my attention or to the mayor's attention or to the board's attention from those people individually.
I guess what I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please, please, no, go ahead.
I just said I wasn't aware of any other complaints. So if there are ones out there, they need to be communicated by that person either towards directed towards the mayor, myself, or any individual commissioner.
Understood. I guess my main concern there is going forward just to ensure that within any town official town communication that such an incident doesn't occur again.
Mr. Ritz, can I jump in for a second?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Typically, when it's, I would categorize this, number one, as a as something that is that needs action, of course, and it may have happened, I'm not aware of it. But typically, this would be an executive function of the the mayor regarding a personnel type issue. So it's important that we hold the mayor accountable. But at the same time, there are items that don't surface in our purview that relate to personnel type items. So just so there's a context for it. And one thing, I don't mean to change gears, but just quickly. Informally, it's my understanding that Deputy Ahal is back in a service function in Frederick City as a Frederick County Sheriff. But there's investigations that is slow and processed related to the Pennsylvania Police Forces. I don't know if it's the state or local or what that piece of it is. But I think again, you know, from my informal understanding is once that investigation is concluded, we should, I believe, see him here back on patrol. But again, I would I would verify that. That's something that that hopefully it is accurate and we'll see, you know, come to fruition soon, I hope.
That is generally what we've heard or we're we'll welcome him back to.
Absolutely.
It's air processed and it is confused by it was by a state patrolman or an officer from Pennsylvania. So that all has to work out into separate jurisdictions. We may say, thank you.
And I think some of that delay, I would hypothesize is probably COVID related regarding staffing on their end. But, you know, again, it all remains to be seen. Ms. Willetts, are there any more individuals signed up for public comment?
No, there are not.
Okay, so we now move forward to an administrative item.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I'm sorry, I interrupt. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned with all these people that are here online. I don't think they they're on here just to look at our pretty faces. I'm afraid that they have some issues that they might want to talk about, and maybe it was unclear on how to get on the agenda. Maybe I'm wrong, just it seems like an over.
So Commissioner Davis, if I can, so I believe we would have several for agenda item number one. I believe Fox and Associates has at least one or two speakers. And then I would imagine there are several speakers from D H Horton for agenda item number seven. Outside of that, I'm not aware of anybody else.
So let's let's ask the question. Are there any individuals at this time who would like to weigh in on public comment? This is sort of a dynamic situation because of Zoom. So procedurally, we typically wouldn't do it this way, but Mr. Davis, I think you make a valid point. Is there anybody who would like to weigh in on general public comment at this time? Okay, so moving procedurally, so we understand when we move forward to specific agenda items, if individuals that are not part of the presentation want to weigh in, we will also ask the same question again to give everybody that opportunity to weigh in at that time as we move through the agenda items. So, Mr. Davis, will that satisfy the the concern or address the concern, rather?
Yeah, I just thought there might have been one lady that that wanted to speak that had sent us all an email.
Understood. Okay. And so we'll ask one more time, anybody want to weigh in right now for general public comment?
Hi, I I'm the one who sent the email.
Very good. So could you identify yourself, give us your address and you'll have your five minutes and you're good to go.
Yes, my name is Brittany Fritz. My address is two one six De Paul Street. I am the owner of five oh two East Main Street. I'm the one who sent the email. I was just concerned because with the problem with the neighbor, there has been potential issues with selling the property. Sadly, I did have, I was moving to Thurmont with my daycare because I was given a different opportunity that I just could not pass up. But I've been here in town since two thousand thirteen with my daycare. So I was just happy that Joe brought it to the attention that we should all be treated equally, whether who buys the property. It is a commercial property that's done for many things. And I just thought it should be addressed that it should be fair to anybody who purchases the building. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. That's appreciated.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much for coming in or zooming in, I guess. New world. Okay. Any other individuals who would be interested in making public comment on non-agenda items at this time? Okay, therefore, hearing none, we're moving.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I know I know we got like a lot going on tonight. I just wanted to clarify my, now that Ms. Fritz said something here, just to go back to what I was saying. I just want to clarify everyone. I was in no way, shape or form saying that town staff was bending the rules. I I I'm, I just wanted to state at the meeting because from the information that I received, just to make it known that the adjacent property, the the situation that Ms. Fritz was dealing with and the potential for another business entity could potentially be dealing with that individual. And my understanding is that that town is quite aware of that, so I'm very happy for that. And I know that they will that they'll address that should that situation arise. That's all I wanted to, I didn't clarify myself there, so. Now it's, now I did.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So we turn now to administrative business, item H. This is a proclamation declaring April twenty twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Will this be staff or Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to go ahead and read it, Commissioner, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Proclamation National Child Abuse Month, April twenty two thousand twenty-one, whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem and finding solutions depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas the effect of child abuse are felt by the whole community and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed as partnerships are created among the social service agencies, schools, religious organizations, local governments, law enforcement, aid and the business community. And whereas youth serving prevention programs offer positive alternatives for young people and encourage youth to develop strong ties to their community. And whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore, be a proclaim that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand twenty-one as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town of Emmitsburg. And call all citizens, call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, businesses to increase their participation in the effort to present child abuse thereby strengthen the Emmitsburg community. If if you agree, this will be adopted the fifth day of April today, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Grove? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
You're aware that there's somebody from the Child Advocacy Center on the line?
Yes, Ms. Grove, yes.
Yes, I am here.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners and everyone who is in attendance. I'm Robin Grove. I'm the director of the Child Advocacy Center of Frederick County. We're more commonly known as the CAC. If you are unfamiliar with us, we are a family friendly facility where kids and families receive comprehensive trauma informed child focused services throughout the course of the investigation and prosecution of child maltreatment cases. We work closely with our local law enforcement, CPS, the State's Attorney's Office, Frederick Health Hospital and other community partners to provide a multidisciplinary response and create a safe environment that supports child victims and their families. The CAC provides trauma focused forensic interviews, medical evaluations, therapy services, advocacy and prevention services. Last year, we were able to provide this multidisciplinary response and services to more than two hundred and fifty children in Frederick County. So just to kind of add on to what was stated in the proclamation, while adverse childhood experiences, even the most serious of ones, such as abuse and neglect is harmful and impactful, the scars of those experiences don't need to be carried for a lifetime. With proper intervention and timely intervention and support, we can counterbalance the weight of those experiences. Research has shown that just one caring, supportive, responsive adult in a child's life can make that positive difference. And so as a community, we have a shared responsibility for our children and families to be able to live and grow and provide a voice for the voiceless and provide a safe and stable nurturing environment. So not only during Child Abuse Prevention Month, but throughout all the months of the year, be there for our kids, be the one to make that difference, to lend that hope and to buffer those negative impacts. And together, our community can help kids be safe, physically and emotionally healthy and thrive not only today and tomorrow, but for generations to come. During the month of April, we'll be posting activities and events and information on our Facebook page, so feel free to visit that. And there will be some pinwheels planted in Emmitsburg this week. So when you see one of our pinwheels out there, it's just a reminder that all children deserve a happy and healthy childhood. And thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
My pleasure.
We now turn to item B. Mr. Briggs, I'm assuming this is you again, sir?
Yes, yes, it is.
Commissioner O'Donnell, can we get a motion on the proclamation first?
I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented?
I make a motion to accept the proclamation as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner. Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. Ms. Willetts, thank you for the, the guidance on that one. We now turn to item H. Mr. Briggs?
Thank you, Commissioner. Proclamation, Earth Day, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one is the fifty-first annual birthday, which began in nineteen seventy to foster public awareness of the needs to protect the environment and conserve resources. And whereas all species play a unique role in the complex web of life and contribute to the ecosystem services on which all life on earth depends. And whereas by two thousand fifty, between sixty and seventy percent of all people will live in cities and, and special species provide important service to those city dwellers, such as generating oxygen and purifying the air, controlling other annual animals considered pests for the, the spread of disease, pollinating plants, crops, providing recreational opportunities and well-being, et cetera. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, geography, depend on health of the earth as we all have, only, we only have one. And whereas it is understood that the sustainability will all only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of the future generations. And whereas it's more important than ever to cooperate locally and internationally to tend, to defend the environment progress, environmental progress that has been here to foregain. And on the, whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim Thursday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one as Earth Day in Emmitsburg, and do hereby call upon all, all citizens, neighbors, community agencies, businesses, join the town in Emmitsburg in general, in celebrating the earth and promoting the protection of our valuable planet and ecosystem. If adopted, the day would be this day, the fifth day of April, two thousand twenty-one. Can't hear you, Tim.
Mr. President, you're, you're.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Although I'll make a motion if you'd like me to.
Yes, please.
How about I make a motion that we approve the proclamation of Earth Day, Thursday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one?
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
I'll second Mr.
Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, no one opposed. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Ritz. Okay, we now turn to our consent agenda, which we have nothing upon. And we turn again then to the Treasurer's report.
Commissioner, just one correction on the Treasury report. It should stay, read March thirty-first and not March first.
Thank you.
I got it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Burns?
All right, the, this is the Treasury report for this month. We have a cash balance as of March first, twenty twenty-one of five million, uh, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four. We had one hundred nineteen, nine hundred eighty-eight deposits and two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two withdrawals, which leaves us with a operating balance forward budget of five million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and eighty. The ten highest checks written in the last month are listed. Any questions can be directed at town staff at this point.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, sir. Hearing none, we'll move forward. We turn now to our Town Planner regarding the Planning Commission report.
Zach, you want to handle that? You want me to? I, I, I know, I actually have it, but.
Yeah, it's, it's up to you, Joe.
I, I, just real quick, I could do it. And if you need to chime in, I don't, I don't mind.
The Planning Commission did meet on March twenty-ninth and unanimously agreed to keep the Fraley Farm Collector Road in the town's comprehensive plan. And then also the commission unanimously approved the ordinance regarding the classification change of the wastewater treatment plant parcels, of which we will be voting on this evening, and unanimously approved affording the amendment to chapter three of the comprehensive plan to the Frederick County Planning Department and the Maryland Department of Planning for mandatory sixty-day review. A public hearing regarding this change has been set for June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. And just to, just to let everybody know, those amendments, in case, in case you were wondering, it regard, it's regarding properties in and around town. I believe, I believe as the mayor mentioned, someone mentioned earlier about potential properties and annexing and developments. So there are two adjacent properties north of North Gate were added to the town growth boundary as low-density residential R one to be consistent with current neighboring North Gate and Brookfield Developments. The owner of the larger of those properties has approached the town wishing for annex in order to extend the North Gate. He stakes to extend North Gate by forty-eight single-family dwellings. Then there's a property basically southwest of the wastewater treatment plant. We discussed this one before. It's adjacent to Creamy Road and to U S fifteen North, currently owned by the Daughters of Charity. That is added to the town growth boundary and as a general commercial B two due to proximity to the highway. However, the Daughters of Charity already agreed to provide the town a twenty-five-year forest conservation easement on that property so the town could plant trees to help satisfy the MS four permitting requirements. Daughters of Charity have no interest in developing that property if annexed. There is a property north of Silo Hill that was changed from low-density residential R one to medium-density residential R two. That's consistent with Silo Hill, which is R two. That developer, the potential developer for that property wants to build twenty-nine town homes and thirty-four single-family homes. An R two designation would allow for the town homes because R one does not. And then there are three properties, specifically the former auction house, Spike's Auto Body and Rube's Crab Shack, one more Seton. In order to continue its commercial site, if annexed into the town, they were changed from low-density residential R one to neighborhood commercial B one. And that's all I have. Hopefully, Zach, if you need to clarify anything, please do so.
Yes, that was very detailed. So that's everything I was going to say as well.
Awesome. Thanks.
Okay, are there any questions for the planner or the liaison from the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll, we'll move forward. So at this point, we're going to move to our main agenda items. One thing I will advise is that this evening, there will be a Board of Commissioners' public hearing pending approval by the board for an agenda item related to what Mr. Ritz alluded to, ordinance twenty-one dash zero three. So I'm announcing that is something that will be forthcoming. At this time, we turn to agenda item number one, and it relates to the North Seton Green Street Conceptual Plan for consideration. The presentation at the meeting is coming forward from Fox and Associates and town staff. So at this time, I'll turn it over to town staff first.
Mr. President, Kathy and Mr. Mayor, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So the town received a seventeen thousand, five hundred and thirty-dollar grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in order to create the North Seton Avenue Green Street conceptual plan. We did hire Fox and Associates in order to create this plan. If approved, at the next meeting, the town will apply for more grant fundings from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in and around March, two thousand twenty-two in order to create engineered plans, which are construction and bid-ready plans. The goal is to include, if possible, the North Seton Avenue water lines and the engineered plans, which will save the town a significant amount of money. We will then apply for implementation grants in and around two thousand twenty-three. The proposed project at a staff level and Mr. Mayor level has three main benefits for the town, in our opinion. First and most, first and most importantly, it will greatly reduce the likelihood of flooding at the North Gate entrance, which will improve the safety for those residents. Second, it will be a continuation of the town beautification projects that we've been doing over the past many years. And third, we will generate five MS four credits from this project, which we can use for our next MS four permit, which is between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-eight. I'm very confident, and I can say this very confidently, that we will get most, if not all, of the non-waterline costs paid for by grant funds, mainly because of the safety issue at the North Gate entrance. It's a major flooding issue, major flooding hazard, and there's lots of grants available for flooding issues. The stormwater management improvements are estimated, an engineered estimate of two hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred dollars and forty cents. Total cost, cost, including the waterline replacement, is one point five million dollars and some change. I will now turn it over to Joe Cece from Fox. And as the Mr. President stated, the plan is on our website. If those at home would like to follow along, I apologize for the, the issues. Any questions, please send me an email or give me a ring and I'll be more than happy to walk you through the plans. So, Joe?
I'm Joe Cece with Fox and Associates. And I have on the meeting tonight also Mary Patton, who is our landscape architect. And she has done a lot of work on this project as well. With, without the the, the concept plan being on the screen, I gotta change my presentation a little bit. But we'll get through it. So the project overview, so the town, as Zach said, received a Green Streets, Green Jobs, and Green Towns grants to develop the Green Street Concept Plan for approximately sixteen hundred linear feet of North Seton Avenue from North Avenue to Provincial Parkway. This conceptual design incorporates green infrastructure practices such as street trees, native plantings, bio-retention cells for stormwater management as ways to reduce impervious, thereby reducing the amount of water that's discharged directly to the waterways. The plan incorporates some flood mitigation through green infrastructure, reduction in the impervious area through sidewalk removal and replacement, reduction in the pavement widths. It also incorporates more structured parking and better pedestrian and bicycle access. The plan also incorporates some stream restoration techniques that will enhance the tributary to Flat Run that is adjacent to North Seton Ave near Provincial Parkway. That's the, the stream, the small stream that runs under, under Provincial Parkway there. So the design goals of the North Seton Ave Green Street Plan are based on the G three grant program and the recommendations by State Highway Administration for scenic byways. The G three grant program supports the design and implementation of green streets, which involves enhancing and increasing green spaces in communities, implementing urban green stormwater practices and replacing impervious surfaces with permeable materials. The recommendations to enhance the scenic byways, again, provide native plantings and landscaping using bio-retention for stormwater management, providing shared-use paths, paths. So with these principles, there are three main design goals that were identified for North Seton Ave in the design booklet. The first main design goal is to incorporate green stormwater, practice it, green stormwater infrastructure, which reduces impervious area. And yeah, excuse me. That's the first goal is green stormwater infrastructure. The second goal is to implement complete street designs, design elements. The key elements to complete street design include traffic calming, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, and vehicular access. And all these transform the streets into a vibrant community spaces. And I think that some of this has already started with the projects that was done on a few years ago on Main Street. And this would kind of be kind of build off of that, off of the project for Main Street. Our third design goal was to employ native plantings, plant palette. The native plantings add green space. They provide ecological value by providing natural habitat. And they enhance aesthetic value of the street. They also provide separation between the pedestrians and vehicular circulation. And with that, I'll ask Mary if she has anything to add to the planting, since she had a, a lot to do with that.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, everyone. I think, Joe, you've done a great job of summarizing thus far. That maybe just the one thing I'll add in regards to the plantings is the goal also with the native plant palette is to provide seasonal interest year-round so that we've got nice color in the spring and summer, some nice fall color as well, and evergreen and grasses in the winter. So it's not just, you know, that we're getting some nice texture and color out there year-round.
Thank you. I guess I'll move on to the, the, the improvements. Let me go to this. So some of the measurable improvements for this project, we reduced the impervious area by, you know, at least in concept, by eleven thousand square feet and replaced that with, with green space, with plantings. We took about two thousand square feet of, of impervious sidewalk and replacing it with, with concrete, with permeable concrete that'll allow the water to infiltrate into the ground directly. We're putting just over four thousand square feet of stormwater bio-retention planters. In all of this, it treats, you know, ninety-six, about ninety-six hundred cubic feet of stormwater, which is where, as Zach had mentioned, the MS four credits come from, but by treating this stormwater. For street improvements, we're providing, as I mentioned, some permeable concrete sidewalks, especially on the, I guess that's the eastern side of the road, where there is no sidewalk now. We're also, again, on that eastern side, which is the northbound lane. There, there's parking, people park along the, the shoulder there. We're, we want to have that as more structured parking as part of this plan. And part of that is for pedestrian safety. We, we don't want people crossing the street, you know, in the middle, you know, everywhere, in, in the middle of the block. We want to focus them into the three new mid-block crosswalks that we're proposing. We're also want to, we, we don't have the room to, to provide a bicycle lanes. We're also want to, we, we don't have the room to to provide a bicycle lanes, unfortunately, on this. But we are going to have uh shared lane markings, uh, which give the bicyclist uh the right of way to use the, to use the lane. We also, as, as I stated, um, we enhance the green space with native plantings. Uh, we have like about seventeen thousand square feet of planting and at least, you know, twenty seven new street trees in this area. Um, some of the concerns that that we had with North Seaton Ave as it is right now, um, the road is oversized, the amount of pavement that's out there. Um, we only use twenty-two feet of, for travel lanes, but there is at least thirty-one feet of pavement out there. Um, at DePaul Street, there's some long crosswalks. Um, and they don't lead to anything, at least one of them does, doesn't lead to anything, excuse me. Um, there's a lot of unnecessary hardscape. Um, that's more on the west side of the street. There's a lot of sidewalk, extra sidewalk that really, we can remove it, um, and put in green space there. Um, as I've mentioned earlier, there's no sidewalk on the eastern side of the street. And there's, um, I'm sure you all know, there's all the, the storm drain runs down towards flat, y- yeah, that's Flat Run. And uh, it's in a, there's a, there's a swell, a paved swell along the side of the road that, and just dumps untreated stormwater directly into the, the Flat Run. So all these things, we looked at, and what we, our plan is to remove the unnecessary pavement. Um, we're going to narrow the street down, so it's going to be curbed, and it'll be twenty-two feet wide, so it'll be two eleven-foot lanes. It's going to be just like it is now, that's, that's what the lane widths are. Um, but we're going to curb it, we're going to, we want to bring it down. Really, that's going to be some traffic calming there, because it's going to really transform the feel of the street um, from being a main thoroughfare. It's going to make it feel more like a, a local street. So I'm removing the unnecessary hardscaping that we talked about. Um, we're going to better define the crosswalks near DePaul Street and um Irish Town Road, provide some um, mid-block crosswalks for the, the parking bays, the structured parking bays that we're proposing. We're adding green space, adding stormwater management. Um, oh, one of the other things was, right now, the, all the, all the streetlights are mounted on the telephone poles. Um, we want to bring streetlights down to the pedestrian level that are kind of similar to the ones that were installed on, on Main Street. Uh, the kind of decked LED decorative lights. Um, they will, they're more economical, they provide better light. And it, and it makes a, it'll give the, the street a better feeling at the, at the pedestrian level. Um, those are the main items without the plan on the screen to look at. Um, it's, it's probably hard to visualize these things, um, especially how we, how we plan to um, structure the parking more or less on, on the uh, the east side of the road. But I think if, you know, if, if anybody has questions on those things, on, on the way this, the street's going to function, I'm sure you can get with Zach and he'll get with me, and we'll get those questions answered. Um, I wanted, one, one of the big things that we're, we've been talking about is the native plantings. And I want to go back to Mary to talk about um the plantings and especially the, the stream restoration work that we want to do down at a well, it's not Flat Run, but it's the tributary to Flat Run near Provincial Parkway. Um, we, we want to really enhance that area, especially the entrance to, I guess that's North Gate Provincial Parkway. Right now, that whole area is barren. Uh, we want to provide street trees, we want to provide um landscaping in that area to stabilize that stream, take all that, there's a lot of riprap in there that I, I don't think it's ever done its job of, of stabilizing this, the stream banks. Take that out and use um engineered or bio-engineered stabilization. And I'll let Mary talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Joe. Um, yeah, so the goal there with restoring this uh flat, that section of Flat Run Stream is essentially to help it get back to its sort of its natural character. Um, as Joe mentioned, right now, there's really no planting there, it's mostly just lawn. There are some failed riprap and an attempt to uh preserve the stream banks that doesn't, it hasn't yet really been able to do its job. So the goal with um these soil bioengineering techniques is really just to plant this, the, the stream banks, and the plants themselves will help stabilize the soil. It also improves the water quality of the Flat Run Stream by shading the water and creates habitat. Um, and it will look a lot nicer, I think, as well, to get some plants in that area. So there's a few techniques that we've outlined along um within this Green Street Concept Plan, which include um simply just planting the banks themselves using uh live stakes, which are just um rootable vegetative cuttings. You can plant them a lot more densely than you would typical nursery stock. So they uh fill the, the stream bank and grow a lot quicker, they stabilize the soil a lot quicker. Um, so I think that will be a really good technique that we can look at using there. And with that, you can install coral logs that will help stabilize the stream bank and help the plants um establish without uh getting any more erosion in that area. Along with these, um, with the plant palette here, we're still proposing a native plant palette that will be able to, that are appliquated to the wet conditions of Flat Run Stream that um will provide seasonal interest and that will grow very quickly to help stabilize the banks. Um, so, what, once everyone has a chance to flip through the, the images in the, in the plan, we've got a plan in there to kind of outline the areas that we're looking at planting as well as some sections through Flat Run Stream to kind of give it an idea of, of how these things might be installed. But the goal ultimately is just to plant the stream blanks to really stabilize the soil and prevent erosion. And um the plantings will also act as a buffer for any potential flooding events.
Um, I think with that, that, w- without the um images up on the screen that have been available, um, if you have any questions, like, we could probably try to answer them now. Um, or, you know, we can get back to you.
So does anybody on the board have questions at this time for Mr. C C or Ms. Patton?
Uh, Mr. President, actually, I don't have a question for Mr. C C or Ms. Patton. Um, great presentation. I actually have a question for town staff, it just made me think of something. Uh, Mr. C C, I believe, mentioned um the new street lighting on North Seaton Ave. If we do get the new lights on North Seaton, do you think it'd be possible in the future going forward, uh, when it comes time for Christmas, that we can extend the Christmas lights up North Seaton Ave?
So Commissioner Ritz, um, we actually, that's, uh, obviously, that's a great possibility. For this year, we're hoping, we're working with Potomac Edison to be able to attach some Christmas decorations to their poles in the meantime. But definitely, that would be a great opportunity for, and we're actually looking at maybe doing a streetlight study for the rest of the town. Um, so we'd be, you know, obviously very anxious to hear what kind of streetlights they're proposing on North Seaton. And we could take a look at that for the rest of the town as well.
Okay, great, thanks. I, I just, just the way my brain works, I just, I heard streetlights, I, I don't know why I turned to Christmas, I just started thinking of that, so. Um, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Uh, any other questions from the board or the mayor or comments?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Yes, uh, Mr. C C, great presentation, given your limited uh ability to show everything. Uh, you talk about traffic calming. Now, to me, traffic calming means speed bumps and things of that nature, aroundabouts, all that kind of stuff. Obviously, I don't think that's in the plans. Are you predicting traffic calming because of the shrunk and down lanes, that that should help prevent some of the um, anybody that's, you know, traveled up and down North Seaton by foot or bike realizes that some people come flying through there on a regular basis? Um, I didn't know, you know, what, what kind of calming, per se, you might be thinking of.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're thinking is, right now, there's, there's that wide shoulder on the the northbound lane, and even this, the lane into town, the southbound lane, there's maybe a three or four-foot shoulder. So we're planning the curb, the, the, the future curb would be pulled in to where the white lines are now. Um, so you'd have two eleven-foot travel lanes. And just by doing that, I, I think it's really going to change the feel of that street and um act as traffic calming just by doing that. And, and pulling the, the plantings and the stormwater um, planting areas right behind the curb, I, I think that's really going to uh, help with traffic calming.
If I can add to that, sorry, Joe, sorry to interrupt, but I was just going to add as well, um, just to kind of build on the fact that the plantings will be there, street trees will be there. Um, it really changes the scale and it adds a lot of texture. Um, and more stuff to look at, if you will. So if you're driving along and there's just, um, you know, more things going on around you, there's plants, there's trees, there's streetlights, it, it sort of forces a, a driver to slow down a little bit.
Excellent. And actually, my next question for you, uh, was for you, Ms. Patton. Um, you talk about the different trees and things of that nature going up in the, you know, boxes along the trees and stuff like that. We had a small issue in town uh about two years ago with some you know, new plantings that went in on the square and the debate on who was going to handle, you know, taking care of these things. Are these going to be plants that we have to worry about overgrowth? Uh, is this going to be on the citizens who live or that have them in front of their house? Is, is it going to be something that's going to be high maintenance? Or will this be things that, you know, will look, look beautiful, but will be kind of out of sight, out of mind when it comes to having to maintain them?
I think um there, there are certainly plans that we can propose that'll be low maintenance. Um, the list that we've put together have, I'd say, at this point, a little bit more of a mix. Some things that are very low maintenance, some things that require some maintenance. Um, but ultimately, any plants, at least in the beginning two years, there would want to be some amount of maintenance, just to make sure they become established. And then, once they're established, that maintenance regime can really be pulled back. I think it's something that we can um talk with you and the town about and kind of figure out who it's going to, who's going to be the most appropriate person to maintain everything. Um, but ultimately, uh, like I said, once you kind of get through those first couple of years of establishment, the maintenance can really be pulled back. Um, you know, to maybe once or twice a year, kind of thing.
I appreciate that, because I think that, you know, something obviously staff is going to have to take into consideration uh with the new plantings on who exactly would be maintaining them, if it would be uh staff that has to go around and take care of that, or is it going to be on, you know, the individuals in town whose homes they're planting in front of. So I just wanted to put it out there now, thank you, though.
I'd add a couple of things to that. Um, the, the stormwater plantings, those, the, the stormwater um bio-retention areas, those do need to be maintained yearly, a- and it's just cleaning the plants, cleaning it out, making sure the plants are healthy, replacing the mulch. It's not intensive, but it ha- it does have to be done every year. Um, one of the other things just I wanted to mention was, on the western side of the street, where all the, the, the power poles are now, those poles are going to stay in place. We're not um suggesting that we put any of those power lines or, or telephone lines underground. That would be a huge, huge undertaking to do that. So with those lines having to stay there, the plantings underneath them have to be um a smaller scale. So there, there wouldn't be any large trees on, on that side of the street just because of those lines, the power lines.
Any questions from other members of the board?
So. No, not at this time, sorry.
Well, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell, I got, I got a question for you, and I, I know this has been talked about. I know this has been talked about before, and I know Deputy White House, I don't know if he's still in the building or not. And I think it's been brought up, but obviously, you know, we, we want to control some of the speed coming down North Seaton. A lot of people use that to come in from Pennsylvania and cut through at the square to cut over in, back into Pennsylvania to get into Fairfield and things of that nature. And, you know, obviously, there are a lot of children that live around there and things of that, that nature. So, yes, I love the fact that it's going to be speed deterrent in some way, shape, or form. Um, is there more that we can do in regards to that, uh, to, uh, you, you know, uh, I don't know if you've, I mean, Commissioner O'Donnell, you've ridden your bike down that road, you know people fly up that, uh, they come over that bridge and almost catch some air sometimes. So I, it, it just concerns me, you know, if we do shorten there, you know, we do make the road a little bit smaller, um, however that may be. I, I just get a little nervous with, you know, the amount of kids that do live in the area. People that do ride their bikes that, you know, is there something more we can do to deter the speed per se?
And I'd like to chime in real quick, uh, thank you, Commissioner Burns, for stating that, um, a- as, as a resident of North Seaton with children. Yes, I, I agree wholeheartedly, um, we have a lot of um vehicles going more than the twenty-five miles an hour uh past the house. You have to be really careful crossing, crossing sometimes to go to the vehicle that's over on the shoulder. But um, I, I can see Mr. C C's explanation, you know, uh, with Ms. Pat too. Um, you know, putting in the trees, making the road a little bit more narrow could potentially be a deterrent. However, there are individuals on a daily basis, they always fly through, you can always see them uh flying through. God knows how fast they're going, looking at their cell phone while they're driving. Um, they're going to just keep doing it, I guess, until they get caught. So um, thanks for bringing that up, I, I do appreciate that, because they, they do fly through there.
I, I think the, the road diet concept and the, the visual narrowing of the, the road space will definitely help. I mean, there's a, there, oftentimes, when you see a, a narrow road and like a, a, a new urbanist development, the question is, you know, can a fire truck or a rescue vehicle negotiate it in a, in a timely manner? And then the question is, do you go with large equipment, one piece, or do you go with uh two pieces of equipment that are smaller? Uh, I, I don't think we're facing that with the, the, the road diet that we're looking at. Um, so, so that's kind of an upside for us. Um, the question that I have is, granted, well, no pun, uh, this is grant-funded, as I see it. Um, but the maintenance, the expense of the maintenance seems to be something we haven't said yet. Um, as this is a state road and these are state sidewalks, if this occurs, does this maintenance convey to the town of both the uh, the, the planning setup and the, the new sidewalks? Do we have an answer for that?
The sidewalks are going to be the, still the responsibility of the individual property owners, as it is with everywhere else around town. Um, regarding the plantings, uh, we tried to, I reached out to the state to see if they would be interested in purchasing the upgrades of, they do partner with towns and other municipalities at times in order to gain their MS four credits, um, and take over the maintenance, they are not interested at this time. So uh, I spoke with Kathy and the mayor, we would just have to contract this out at least once a year to come in and clean it up a little bit and make sure everything is growing correctly. Um, we currently have, fully have to do that. Our community park basins, we do own some stormwater management infrastructure there. So I do have a contractor that does this. Um, I don't know the cost, I can send this plan over to them, and, you know, it's going to be hard to get a finessed of the cost, because, you know, they might come in and a lot of the plants are dead, and, you know, the cost may be more. But we would definitely build this into our yearly MS four budget.
Right, okay, well, thank you for clarifying that. The next piece was the question related to the water line. So I, I don't know if I heard it correctly. So at the time this work is to occur, we will also be replacing the water line under that section of road, did I hear that accurately?
That's the goal, that would be the way to save money on both ends, the water line and, and also stormwater. The lines would open first, and then this would be taken place instead of the asphalt soils. Lines were broken first and then, um, this would be taken place instead of the asphalt soils that would go in if we didn't do this.
And would this help me the, meet the water pressure needs of Northgate and Emmett Ridge? I know we've had significant issues over time with that water pressure.
Yes, uh, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be the upgrade for ten inch water line. And talking with Dan, Jimmy, um, it would greatly increase the pressure and the hydrants would actually work in this.
So the, the, the last item I, I talk about is, um, the, number one, uh, I find myself enthusiastic about this. I think there's a, 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 a value added for the homeowners, uh, for the safety piece and certainly environmentally, it ticks a lot of the boxes. But in, in the immediate term, how can we get into the process to encourage, for example, and, and this is, you know, long-term in the timeline. But, you know, local hiring and or local or near local sourcing for, uh, native plant material and the core logs, et cetera. Uh, how do we jump in the process in that? So, you know, this grant money stays, some of it can stay home, so to speak.
The, the maintenance, I mean, we would, we would have to bid everything out if it's going to be over a certain amount. And that's going to be the problem with the overall project. Um, it's over twenty thousand dollars, well over twenty thousand dollars. We're going to have to competitive. Um, you know, regarding the maintenance, I don't expect that much every year. So that's a possibility of definitely source of local contract, landscaping contractors and such. Maybe, maybe get volunteers, you know, that would be the, the best case scenario, but it's going to be.
That's, that's a difficult mountain to climb, the volunteer piece. Um, okay. And timeline from, we're, we're the, we're the board to approve this and move forward on this. Do we have a sense of the, the longevity of this type of project?
So my goal, if the board would approve this, I would apply for the engineering grants in March of twenty twenty-two. The Chesapeake Bay Trust, I reached out with them and they were very excited about the project. Um, I think we'll get funding for that. I know we're, we're trying to do the water lines as fast as possible. Um, Kathy and Maddie are working towards grants, lines, and I'll be simultaneously working on grants for this. Streetscape and stormwater management infrastructure. In my opinion, the best case scenario would be twenty twenty-four, but I know we're, we want to do it sooner. Um, if we do the water line sooner, that would be okay. We would just have to come back and, uh, you know, do the, the other improvements later on, but that'd be cheaper if we do it all at the same time. And Joe, can, can we even phase it out? Would it have to be done all at the same time in order to save money with the same contractor?
I think it could be phased. Um, definitely i- if you had the ability to do the water line first, um, that would, you could definitely do that. That wouldn't be a problem at all. And I think depending on the, the, the final cost of this, um, you, you probably could look at phasing it. I think it could be done.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
There's also some storm drain crossings on, on North Seaton. They cross from the east to the west or the west, you know, the east side to the west. I think there's a, at least two, maybe three to cross from one side of the road to the other. They'll probably have to be replaced because imagine they're corrugated and then they're probably rusted all out and have to be replaced at the same time also.
It, there'll be, um, a fair amount of storm drain have to be installed in order to, uh, uh, be- because these, these stormwater planters are going to act as an inlet basically. They're going to take all the stormwater. So after it's treated, now we got to get it out of there. A- and the water that's, um, in excess of what gets treated in a, in a larger storm. So we got to get that out of there. So there, there will be a storm, storm drain and inlets in these structures.
Also, the, uh, parking boxes that you're going to be making, are they going to be, are they going to be impervious? Blacktop, uh, sort of like Seaton Center?
No, they, they won't be because it'll be a state highway and they're, they're not going to allow that.
So they're going to just, you're just going to go back with regular blacktop?
Yes.
And, but they'll allow for the sidewalk?
Uh, we're proposing it and they haven't denied it yet.
Okay, because do you have, um, crossings for the driveways from the houses? I don't know if that'll, if, you know, you'll be using impervious for that too, I guess.
Yeah, we had, that was part of the concept is to have it all in, uh, impervious, permeable.
Yeah, sure. What I was just saying, uh, we did admit this, this state highway administration and, um, we're very, um, you know, nothing that would kill this project is going to change significantly we see today. Correct, Joe?
Yeah, that's correct. They had comments on, most, most of the state highways comments were on storm drain design, storm water management design, which are, um, their, their comments were, um, not at the level of a concept plan. They were beyond the, the level of this plan. So I, I think Zach, you had talked to them and, or emailed them and said that we would address those comments with engineering plans.
Will we also be cleaning up Flat Run where all this water is going to be flowing into because it needs to be, probably needs to be cleaned down on where it's going to be going into. It's all grown up with brush and trees and, and everything on both sides of the road.
Not right now with this concept plan.
Cliff, it, uh, right at the entrance of Northgate, um, that will be included in cleaning up where all of the, it's basically just dirt and riprap stone.
It's all built up and that's very, it looks like, uh, three quarters of the pipe is covered up with dirt.
Right, right. So the, the entrance there at, uh, Northgate, that's what we're, uh, proposing.
Okay, so they'll all stop at the bridge?
Correct.
That's all I have. Uh, Mr. Sweeney, did that hit the mark for you?
Yes, I'm, I'm glad it's happened. I've been, I, I lived on North Seaton for thirty years. And I'm glad that we're going to be, uh, are also going to look like the rest of the town because we've been left here for so long.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments from commissioners for, uh, those who presented or for staff?
I guess my one final comment, just, just to state, first off, you know, I like the plan. I think it's, it's well, well-designed plan. Um, a lot of positive to it. I guess just the, the one thing that really jumps out too, though, I know, uh, Commissioner Burns touched on the, the speeding, but, the, the parking situation, I know a lot of us, myself included, um, do utilize the current, uh, shoulder, um, there on the, the one side of, um, of North Seaton for, for additional parking. Um, granted, right in front of my house, it looks like we're, we'll be losing that. Next door to me, uh, the gentleman that owns that house, he does rent that to some college students. I know he's potentially thinking of selling it, but in the meantime, he does, he does rent that out. So I know that the, um, students do utilize that parking as well. If that were to go, then they would need to be parking out back. And as it stands, because that house is in the village zone, he's currently actually in violation of ordinance, um, the one ordinance, seventeen thirty-six forty, I believe it is. Um, yes, it's a single family home. However, he's, he's renting it out. So it's four bedroom home, needs six parking spots. There's only three out back currently. So, um, might need to, he'd have to be made aware that's, that's an extra expense for him then to, um, modify his, his lot to, to compensate, well, to be in compliance regardless, but, um, to, to add that additional parking. If he continues to rent that out, um, instead of selling it as a single family home.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And, and then there's the limited parking in town anyway. I know that's something we all, all discuss to hear. We're, we're actually losing some parking in the village zone. I, I know some of the local churches and businesses even, um, utilize that. Parking area as well. A lot of that is now going to be lost.
I think the, the parking can be, um, the parking count can probably be adjusted when you get into, uh, the engineered design of it. Probably gain a few more parking spaces.
Okay. I mean, I'm not, I'm not just speaking for myself. I'm just, you know, um, I know there's a couple of areas that, um, get used a lot with the, with that parking. So. But that, that's good to know. Thank you.
And, um, Mr. President, one thing, one more thing, if I may, uh, I failed to mention, I did receive two, uh, public comments from residents on this street. Um, and they were in favor of the proposed design.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, wh- as discussed before, we'll turn, is there anybody here who wants to provide public comment at this time related to this presentation? Okay, hearing none, uh, I turn to town staff, Ms. Willetts. Uh, is there any action you require of us this evening related to this presentation?
I believe Zach was looking for approval of the concept plan.
Okay, does he want this through a formal vote, I would imagine?
Yes.
Okay. So. Is, and I want to make sure I have the proper title for the document. Um, so the North Seaton Green Street conceptual plan, is that appropriate for our purposes?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to, uh, accept the North Seaton Green Street conceptual plan as presented?
I say move.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion at this time?
Just one question for clarification. If we proceed with approving the conceptual plan this evening, how soon then do we see a final plan for, for a final consideration?
So, yeah, so this will actually be the final plan, how it's shown today. Because we, we will need to submit this to the Chesapeake Bay Trust, um, and then they'll need to engineer this. Um, we'll need to submit an RFP to hire an engineering firm to engineer this plan. So this is going to be pretty, pretty close unless we come to some major problems, which we will absolutely bring back to you. Um, this will be really close to the plan.
Got it. So then the final, the, the potential for additional parking then, sounds like it's not going to happen. It would be what we see before us.
Um, I'm, I'm completely okay, you know, as Joe Cece says that it's possible to add more parking spaces. I mean, I'm more than happy to, you know, try to fit in as many as we can during the engineering phase.
So, Mr. Golden, is it, is it safe to say therefore that though this is a final type plan, there is room for tweaking it at a future time?
Yes, well, um, if you can comment about parking spaces, I'll do, we'll do the best we can to add as many parking spaces.
Terrific. Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Any further, uh, items for discussion from the commissioners? So we'll call the vote. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against and opposition?
I'm going to have to go nay on this. I'm, I'm still apprehensive on the parking situation. Um, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the motion carries four to one with Commissioner Ritz in opposition. And with that, we turn to our next item, agenda item number two. Uh, at this time, we hope to move to a public hearing and approval or consideration of ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three. Uh, zoning classification change, uh, for wastewater treatment plant, uh, parcels for consideration. Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Patton, Mr. Cece, thank you so kindly for coming in tonight and for presenting. My apologies for jumping too quickly forward. Um, but thank you again. So we press on to agenda item number two. Ms. Willetts, do we need a motion from the board to move to the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, therefore, is there a motion to move to the public hearing?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we move to the public hearing regarding agenda item number two.
Terrific. Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Uh, any further discussion on these motion, on this motion, pardon me? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries five to zero. We move forward. So we call the hearing at this time, uh, the board, here we go. The, the meeting to consider proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three has now started. We now turn to staff for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this public hearing was advertised in the Frederick News Post on March fifth, twenty twenty. Uh, the purpose of proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three is to change the zoning classification of sixteen seven oh seven and sixteen seven fifteen Greenman Road from agricultural to institutional. Both properties were officially annexed into the town of Emmitsburg on November second, two thousand twenty. Both parcels are owned by the town and they are the locations of the town's previous and current wastewater treatment plant and also our solar panel array. Um, the annexation of these areas was consistent with the growth element goals of the town's previous two thousand nine comprehensive plan and also the current two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan. Um, which I'm going to call, uh, plan from now on. Uh, page three, four of the plan shows the Emmitsburg growth boundaries, suggested land use designations. And the suggested land use designation of these areas is the institutional zoning district. Um, in accordance with title four, subtitle four of the local government article, the Antifa of Maryland, a municipality may not rezone. Substantially different than, from the pre-annexation jurisdiction, which is Frederick County, uh, zone for a five-year period without the express approval of Frederick County. Um, the current Frederick County zoning designation of these parcels is agricultural. So we had to go through their board and, uh, obtain express approval. Um, the council did approve the town zoning reclassification request on February second, twenty twenty-one, um, which allows us to change the zone from ag- agricultural to institutional. And town ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three would change the zoning of both parcels as uh, in accordance with town code section seventeen oh eight zero forty, zoning of annexed areas. If the annexed land is to be classified anything other than rural, suburban, um, RS zoning district, the town board shall refer the matter to the planning commission for recommendation and report. At their March meeting on March first, two thousand twenty-one, the town board forwarded the proposed ordinance through the planning commi- commission for recommendations. At their meeting, uh, on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, the planning commission, uh, did recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one dash zero-three by eight and the four to zero vote. And that is my presentation, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Okay, procedural clarification. So everybody knows, this time we're going to turn to questions from the commissioners. At the conclusion of that, we will then turn to public comment. After hearing public comment, should there be any, uh, we'll hear, uh, a closing of public comment and then we will move to deliberation. At that time, we will then, um, proceed to a motion potentially to end the public hearing. So process wise, we'll hear from commissioners first, should there be any questions, and then we will take public comment. So I now turn to the board. Uh, are there any questions for staff from board members at this time?
I, I, I don't have any. I just want to say that it, it made sense the last time we discussed this. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. So hearing no questions from the commissioners, I now turn to public comment. Uh, Ms. Willetts, is there anybody specifically signed up to comment on this item at this time?
No, we don't have anybody.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody who would like to comment at this time who did not sign up? Okay, hearing none. We move to closing of public comment. If no one has anything more to present, the public comment period is now closed. So. Any discussion by the board related to this item? We heard Mr. Ritz is on board with it, it seems from what I understand. Uh, anybody else feel the need to weigh in at this time? Okay, so we move forward. Ms. Willetts, I'm relying on you. We will now seek a motion to end the public hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then you can take the vote.
Terrific. Okay, just want to make sure we're procedurally following the, the course. Okay. Therefore, is there a motion to end the public hearing at this time?
Make a motion to end the public.
Make a motion to.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sweeney, are, are you okay making the motion? Mr. Burns, are you okay seconding the motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right. The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion to close this? All right, the motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, it's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion to close this public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Burns, I think you're muted, sir.
No, I said aye, I was right before Mr. Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay, therefore, the motion carries five to zero to close the public hearing. All right, so Ms. Willetts, now we call the vote on accepting the ordinance as modified, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the ordinance as presented?
I make a motion to accept the ordinance as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to Mr. Burns's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, it's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We now turn to agenda item number three. Approval of ordinance twenty-one dash zero two, vendor license updates for consideration. And the presentation will be by staff.
Right, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Shaw, who worked on it.
All right, good evening. So, the vendor license ordinance before you is for door-to-door sale of goods and products or temporary sale of good and products upon the streets of Emmitsburg. The ordinance is not required of any persons with an established place of business in town. For the vendor license ordinance, we usually get, so typically the, how the process goes right now is if someone wants to sell products door-to-door or set up a booth on the street, they would need to come to the town office, fill out a one-page form with their information, with their name, the company that they're working for, what they're planning to sell, their vehicle information, and the days on which they would like their permit for. We currently charge five dollars a day and forty dollars for the year. And we are pursuing, we get about three to five requests total a year, so not too many. And we're pursuing this ordinance because we wanted to bring the town code up to the current operation procedures of staff and to protect the town in the event we need to deny a license, because our code doesn't currently give us the ability to deny. So under the ordinance, the proposed changes are requiring, even though we already do this, it'll be in written form now. We're going to require a government-issued photo ID, the description of their goods and services, their tax identification number, proof of qualification to do business, and a statement as to whether or not the applicant, applicant or any person conducting the business has been convicted of any crime or violation of any municipal judgment. It'll also allow staff time to investigate the license before we approve it. So it'll give town staff up to ten business days before we approve the license or deny it. It'll also give us, like I mentioned, the ability to deny the license if they do not conform with federal, state, and local laws and regulations. If the applicant has withheld or falsified information, the applicant has a judgment or conviction against them for fraud, deceit, or misrepien, misrepresentation in the past ten years, or the issuance of the license would not provide for the public health and safety of our residents. And then, the other thing we did was we added language that the license are not required for persons under the age of eighteen involved in a fundraising event for school or nonprofit, and that would be like your Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts going door-to-door and selling cookies or popcorn. And the section regarding the garbage collection and master electricians was, is the exact same wording as is already in our code, but we just had to renumber the section and therefore that's why it's bolded and capitalized. Is there any questions?
I have one question, it was on page twenty-six of our packet. Specifically, section five point oh four dot zero eight zero. It states that garbage collectors shall obtain a license from the town clerk or an elected town official before engaging in such business. My question is, how do elected town officials provide such a license? I'm not accustomed to that.
Yeah, that should be, uh, we'll take that out, that should not, I think that was in the old ordinance, and it just got left in by accident, so we'll take.
Okay, it was bold, so I wasn't sure, okay.
So, so the current businesses that collect garbage throughout town, I know there's several. They have permits now, or is this something new for them?
It'll be something new for them. And it's actually going to help the town with any trash complaints that are not our contractor, so that we'll know who's collecting in certain areas and which businesses. So we'll have to notify all the trash contractor, or our, our contract's actually out for bid now, so any trash contractor that we utilize or is utilizing the town will have to obtain one.
Like the ones that do it at four o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for staff related to this item?
I guess I just have one more, it's probably going to be, sound stupid, but I know you set up for nonprofit. How is this going to affect a, a young youngster that wants to set up a lemonade stand for, which it still happens every once in a while, I'd love to see that.
Which, which section dresses nonprofit, Matty?
Do you know exemptions? Exemption five point oh four seventy.
Right, so it's, it's basically, what's it say, any individual under the age of eighteen engaged in a fundraising event sponsored by a school or nonprofit organization, or any person's exempted by any. Yeah, I mean, I.
You can do that on your own property, I would imagine.
You wouldn't need a, you wouldn't need the permit to sell on your own property, if so, if they're set up on their sidewalk or on their grass to sell lemonade. And I'd be.
Just want to make sure, I mean, it's, it doesn't happen much, but, you know, we want to keep small town, and that's, uh, that's one of the things that, that happen in, in small towns like ours.
And we're not, we're certainly not going to not allow as school-aged children to sell lemonade. We will, that's not the intent of this at all.
Okay, any other questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, I just have one, like, um, for nonprofit, like if you have a car wash or something like that, would that be considered? Because you're not on your own property, you're on like a carriage house or a parking lot in the middle of town.
The way that I, I read this, and this was, Leslie did a lot of the work on this and, and wrote a good bit of it. And so this, these are a lot of the attorney's recommendations. So if I read this correctly, nonprofit, it only applies to persons under the age of eighteen. If I read this right, for fundraising events by a school or a nonprofit organization. So if it's a nonprofit organization such as a church or a civic organization that, um, is, is doing this, they're going to need a permit.
So they would just come to the town office to get a permit?
Um, yeah, they would just have to come to the town office through Matty to do it.
Okay.
Is that something you want to see modified, Mr. Sweeney?
I, I don't know how you could modify it, um, because it's not on private property.
Okay, so, but I guess what I'm asking is like fee-related, like, are they paying a fee for that permit?
The only thing I've seen is like Girl Scouts selling cookies at Jubilee or Lions Club having a car wash at Carriage House, or you know, there's different organizations as different things. Chicken barbecues being sold at the.
So. Guys, those don't fit this, but go ahead, Matty.
Yeah, if you look under section five point oh four, point oh ten, it says what the licensing is required for. It kind of lists out things like selling of magazines. I mean photographs, electric appliance salesman, sellers of bottles, potable liquids, things like that. And that's only if you don't already have an established place of business in town or already have like a brick and mortar location.
So is it fair to interpret it then if the Lions Club were to have a car wash behind the Carriage House, they would not therefore need to get a permit to have that car wash?
That's, that's correct. Or, or your vendors, they liken it, a lot of the municipalities that say let's have a, have a parade and a vendor wants to go and set up a little table and sell balloon animals or some of the light-up things, they would need a license, or anybody that's going to go door-to-door. And that's predominantly what we see here is, are your door-to-door salesmen. But yeah, that, it would not affect your Lions Club, you know, their.
Girl Scouts or anything.
Or the Girl Scouts.
Terrific, okay.
League, anything like that, this, they would not need this.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney, so, I, I know I, I'm sorry if I muddied the waters, but does that satisfy your, your line of question from earlier?
Yeah, that's fine, I just didn't want any, um, you know, any of the, the other organizations that get in trouble for doing this stuff.
No, 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 that, that's, I'm glad you, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up. Okay, so moving forward, are there any other comments or questions from, uh, the commissioners from the board related to this item? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the item as modified?
I make a motion to accept the ordinance as modified.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. So. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of ordinance twenty-one dash zero two, vendor license updates, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries five to zero.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I, I just to make sure, I don't, I didn't hear you state for record, the motion was made by myself and seconded by Commissioner Burns.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It might help whoever's taking the minutes, too.
Sure, you're, thank you. The motion was made by Commissioner Ritz, it was seconded by Commissioner Burns. And it carries five to zero. Terrific, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ritz. I, I I either missed it or it cut out, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so we turn now to agenda item number four for consideration. The RKNK engineering contract for the water clarifier.
Yes, thank you. Um, if you recall, the board approved RKNK as the engineer of choice for the water clarifier project. I believe it was about a year ago. So, basically, the contract covers the professional engineering services of RKNK for the completion of the water clarifier. It includes the planning, the preliminary engineering, design and permitting, as well as bidding and construction phase support for the design and construction of a new water treatment plant clarifier. The project cost for the engineer, engineer cost is two hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. This, this contract is similar to other EJ CDC contracts that you've approved. Most recently would be the pump station. It's, it's a USDA-based contract. It's their template that a lot of the engineers use for infrastructure projects. Leslie's reviewed it and has approved or signed off on it. She deemed it was sufficient. It covers all our insurance coverages that were required. And then it just addresses a lot of the basics, when the town will pay within thirty days, how we go about suspensions and terminations and dispute resolutions, and then the timeline of when they'll provide the town documents and how many. I believe the document was sent, I think Matty sent the document out with the agenda packet. And that's all I have for this, for the water clarifier.
Just to add to the, the piece here. Ms. Willetts, when you mentioned Leslie, you're referring to Leslie Powell, the town attorney, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, yep, thank you. Just want to make sure, and thank you for putting that note in there that she's reviewed it, because you know, I'm the one who's asking that many times, so thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion to, I'm sorry, any public comment related to this item? Sorry, I jumped the gun. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the, or to approve, pardon me, the RKNK engineering contract for the water clarifier as presented? Thank you, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. The motion was made by Commissioner Ritz, it was seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion related to this item before the vote? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, other, is anyone opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. We now turn to agenda item number five. Approval of ordinance twenty-one dash zero four, update to Town Code Chapter twelve point zero eight and twelve point one zero for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we continue to update our very outdated code, we worked with the town attorney, and she suggested that we bring everything from the subdivision ordinance relating to sidewalks and turn it over to the Town Code Chapter twelve. So what we do is we, I, I won't go through line by line, I think it's very simple upgrades and updates to some outdated language. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So, Mr., go ahead.
It's very short, yeah.
So, Mr. Golden, just, uh, just for simplicity's sake, we're looking to make sure that our sidewalk infrastructure and our curbs and gutters are aligned with ADA requirements. And is there any other generalization that we could add to this?
Yeah, so we're just bringing everything up to today's standards. Joe CC also helped out with, uh, for example, section twelve oh eight sixty, with the slope requirements of ADA. So, in a nutshell, it brings everything up to code, so if there is a problem in the future, it would have to be brought up to today's standard.
Okay, Ms. Willetts, do you suggest we take these individually, twenty-one dash zero four, and then twelve point zero eight and twelve dash, sorry, twelve point one zero?
It's actually one ordinance, it covers both.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I misread that, understood. All right.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Ritz.
I, I do see a slight typo, just to just call it out right now, it's.
Sure.
Goodness, I, I just went out back into Zoom and I got rid of the agenda. It's on the, it's on the first page of that ordinance.
Okay, do you recall what it related to?
Yes, up in the top left-hand corner, when it, when it calls out the ordinance number, should that be twenty-one dash oh four? I've seen twenty-one dash oh three. Does that make a difference here, just to do it now, and then?
Sure. So, top left of the page, we have agenda item number five, directly below that, we have ordinance series twenty dash, sorry, twenty twenty-one for the year. Then it says ordinance number twenty-one dash zero three. An ordinance to amend Title twelve. So I believe you're referencing.
Because twenty-one oh three, we already voted on this evening, and that was the wastewater treatment plant parcels.
So for staff purposes, we are modifying number twenty-one dash zero four?
Well, yes, that's good catch, Joe, it would be twenty dash zero four.
Okay, just, just, we're just making. Okay, just, just, we're just making sure there are, didn't have my numbers mixed up.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Ritz, excellent catch.
Thank you.
All right, with that in mind, is there a motion to accept uh, ordinance twenty one dash zero for update the town code chapters twelve point zero eight and twelve point one zero uh, as modified?
I assume.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We now turn to our next agenda item. Sorry, this is taking me a little longer than I thought. Agenda item number six, uh, policy twelve dash zero one, hunting and recreational use at Rainbow Lake Emmitsburg watershed for consideration. So we turn to staff on this one.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ray, Terry Ray and myself, um, she did a lot of research and reached out to a lot of municipalities and some counties um, as well as some places in Pennsylvania to see how they structure their policy related to hunting, fishing and recreational use of um, watershed areas. Uh, the town does not, did not have, or does not currently have a policy that addresses any of this. Most of what you'll see is already written on the hunting permits and fishing permits that we hand out. Um, making it a policy, it's, it's easier for staff to address questions. It gives people, they know exactly what's um, accepted and not accepted on the property. Um, and it provides them guidelines. Um, and I'll just go over what has changed. Uh, what's new, and basically what's new is, is, was not included on the permits already. Basically, the intended purpose behind the policy is to set rules and regulations that govern, govern the usage of the town's property for hunting, fishing and trail usage. In addition to the rules and regulations set forth by this policy, any user of the watershed must adhere to all regulations set forth by Maryland Department of Natural Resources. Um, everything in the bulleted area, all the way down to the last um, bulleted item was included on our permit already. Uh, we added at the request of Commissioner O'Donnell and um, all terrain vehicles except class one pedal, pedal assist bicycles are prohibited in the watershed. A class one pedal assist bicycle is defined as a bicycle equipped with a motor that provides assistance only when the rider is pedaling and that ceases to provide assistance when the e-bike reaches twenty miles per hour. On page thirty four, under, um, and then we broke it out, so hunting rules and regulations. The third bulletin point, um, in an effort to um, allow for more trail access. Terry Ray spoke to um, some of our hunt, our, our current hunters and past hunters, as well as she worked closely with uh, a Chris who is a game warden for uh, D N R. So, um, bullet number three, hunting access is limited to deer and turkey. Hunting of any other wildlife species is prohibited. Next bulletin, bullet point, hunting is only be, only to, that should be a two in there. Only to be permitted from the first day of deer season until the end of deer season. Hunting will then only be permitted from the first day of spring wild turkey season until the end of, that's incorrect. So the end of, there, the end of, oh yes, that's correct, so hunting will only be permitted from the first day of spring wild turkey season until the end of spring wild turkey season. This is typically early September until early February for deer. And then mid-April until late May for spring turkey seasons. Uh, these dates will be based on D N R's approved schedule with comes out an annually, so the dates could change a little bit here and there. Um, new is the use, um, use of hunting dogs to chase, hunt, chase or hunt deer or turkey is prohibited. What's new, portable tree stands and climbing devices that do not use nails, wire, spikes, bolts or screws for attachments are permitted. It's always been on our permit that permanent stands are prohibited. Uh, we went on to state, and this was, um, this next sentence came straight, uh, straight from D N R. It is not permissible to use nails, wire, spikes, bolts, screws or screw in steps with tree stands or any other method that could have a negative impact on the tree. Um, all tree stands must be registered with the town on the hunting permit. Tree stands are only allowed to be put up two weeks prior to the start of deer season and must be removed no later than two weeks after spring turkey season has ended. Owner's name and D N R I D must be on the stand and legible from the ground by unaided vision, unaided vision. Town staff shall confiscate any tree stand in violation and the violator may have his or her permit revoked. Dropping down to fishing regulations, uh, new is fishing permits must be renewed annually and expire on the date of your Maryland fishing license, the date your Maryland fishing license expires. Fishing permits have always been only good for a year, but now they'll co- they'll um, coincide with when their fishing license expires. That was one of D N R's recommendations. And then the last change is, uh, please refrain from walking, standing or throwing the riprap rocks around the lake basin. So I have one more change. On page thirty five, um, we added that trails must not be used if they are wet or muddy to protect the watershed from erosion. Those are all the um, changes or the additions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for staff related to these items?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ritz.
Um, I know it, this policy now is limiting the hunting to deer and turkey. I guess my question is currently, do we have hunters of other um, wildlife, and I don't know their legal uh, hunting uh, schedules for anything other than deer or turkey uh, currently in the watershed?
So, there are, are there norm, numerous other animals that could or can be hunted? Um, but they have such limited timeframes and, and speaking, and Ter- Terry spoke to a lot of people and everybody that she spoke with, they either hunt deer or turkey. Um, there's really no small game hunting um, being done up on the watershed that we're aware of. And looking at a lot of other places, they limit their hunting to only those two major uh, species. And like I said, it was in an effort to help, you know, increase some trail access.
Understood. I guess my main, my only main concern is that if we do this and limit it to those, the two big ones, so to speak, um, there's always the potential for somebody then be like, oh man, you know, um, I was interested in hunting whatever, you know, and now they can't.
Yeah.
Just, just thinking ahead there.
Right, but I, I think the number of people that only hunt deer and turkey, it certainly outweighs the small game uh, that you know, that we're aware of. It's, it's, it basically comes down to what the board wants, if they want, you know, to increase trail access or they want to continue with allowing the small game and there's so many of them. Um, you know, and like Terry said, she, she talked to a lot of long time waters, watershed hunters and, and no one expressed interest in small game.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm sure there might be somebody, but we're not really aware of it.
Uh, do we see a need uh, on the first page here, the last bullet where it says uh, all terrain vehicles uh, except for the bicycles? Should we put something in there uh, that covers emergency situations, whether it be fire rescue or police activities that need to get up there? We do run into problems in the state and the uh, the federal parks with that. To where they uh, they, they don't allow it and they really do enforce it.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely, um, I'll just maybe add with um, with the exception of um, emergency personnel. And you know, that would include then D N R, fire department, sheriff's office. Would that, you think that would suffice?
Yeah, sure, that, that'll be fine, just something that, that's clear.
Right, okay.
And the only other thing I had, the tree stands. Um, I, I was, I was contacted by, by one of our uh, longtime hunters. And um, he has had a tree stand up in that area for thirty plus years and has never had to take it down and uh, of course, now he's up in age and uh, uh, you know, that he's concerned about that. Uh, that, that it could end his hunting days. Uh, and I would think he would do more damage to a tree to, I'm not sure how you attach a tree stand, but I know some are permanently built. And uh, I just, I got a little concerned about that.
So, um, yeah, we, we, uh, this is just based off our research and you know, we leave it up to the board to decide what they want to do. Whatever the board decides, it just helps uh, Ms. Ray and myself on how to convey what the expectations are with tree stands. I know in talking to the game uh, from D N R as well as other places, you know, the majority of them, you know, they let you leave them up for the seasons, they don't let you leave them there permanently. In a hunters, and this is what we've learned from some other hunters and from D N R. Permanent tree stands per se lead to people thinking they've staked some territory and maybe that's a prime hunting spot and somebody's upset about it. Whatever the board decides, you know, as staff, we're okay as long as we have direction in this policy going forward. I think we still need to have the, the tree stands registered and they should still be labeled. Because there have been complaints and, and if there are concerns, then D N R can identify whose tree standard is off the D N R I D.
Mr. Davis, do you mind if I jump in for a second?
No, I thought everybody was gonna let me hang out there, please.
Okay, um, I, I've had some similar conversations as Mr. Davis has had regarding uh, that, that, the access piece li- limiting um, uh, the tree stand or preventing limits for tree stands and just being not so much an inconvenience, but just preventing uh, individuals from hunting based on the, the degree of difficulty of moving a temporary tree stand. Could we pilot this for one year where we remove the requirement for tree stand removal and come back to this issue next year? And that way, we, we do include the permit visibility, the name and registration pieces, but hold off on tree stand removal and we'll, we'll just look at it and, and see the feedback we get. Uh, that, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Well, can, can somebody tell me what the number of permits that we give out for a year? I mean roughly, do we give out the ten or do we give out two hundred?
I had, I would have to ask Terry about that. I know she is being overwhelmed right now with fishing permits. Um, hunting, I have to get back to you on the number of hunting permits that we give out. I know fishing is, is very overwhelming. Uh, Ms. Shaw seems to think anywhere between like thirty and forty hunting permits per year. But we, I can get you concrete numbers uh, tomorrow.
No, no, that's close enough, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments uh, for staff at this time?
I have a question for you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, sir.
Not to put, not to put you on the spot, if we were to, if we were to not exclude the small game, how how would that um, impact recreational use of the watershed? In your opinion?
It, it would be significant because the biggest set of questions I get regarding the trails is when, when does access expand? Um, it's, there, there's a year round interest preceding the, the, the COVID shutdown. And the, the quantity of inquiries like uh, they've, they've skyrocketed from like usually, you know, one every few weeks to literally like two or three a week. Um, I, I get feedback from folks who email me, they know me as the Trail Guy or the Trail Commissioner or whatever. But uh, they know to contact me, I'm also aware town office gets inquiries about this, so opening that access during those winter months, there's a plus and minus uh, factor to it. The one side is we would have more use, I could guarantee, just based on the inquiries that I receive. Uh, I suspect it would increase, you know, I, I don't want to say, you know, the tourism spending, but I do believe there's a, there's a economic benefit to the trails being open. But also for our own community, I mean, I get a lot of questions from folks literally in town. You know, one is often, you know, when are they open, when can I be there and specifically where is it? Like, you know, how, how can you guide me to it? So I, I, I think it would be significant. Um, I do try to talk with our hunters and, and the funny thing is, Mr. Ritz, some of our strongest trail advocates are also some of our hunters. And there, there are two minds uh, regarding like the bigger game like deer and turkey. Uh, some want to see that trail access around the seasons increased because they feel it stirs up the game. And I've heard fewer people say, you know, it's, it's, it's not always to their advantage uh, to have people even riding on Sundays, but the, the majority of hunters I've heard from, you know, advocate stirring things up than rather than not. So I, I think we would gain an advantage from it for our community, like literally like folks in town accessing it. And also I think there's an economic side to it that more people come to town when they know the trails are available, so uh, that's, that's, that's where I am, you know, from, from my Joe Ritz hot seat, how about that?
Okay.
Commissioner Ritz, I just pulled out the, the hunting schedule for twenty, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. So if we let all small game go as it is right now, you only have open trail access in June and July. Because you've got, I mean goose, geese, duck, doves, squirrel, rabbit, fox, pheasant. And it's all spread out at different times.
See, and that's the part I wasn't sure, I, I wasn't.
Yeah.
You know, and the, I'm aware of the big ones, but yeah, the, everything else and how that all coincides. And obviously, yeah, I mean, I, ultimately, my, the way I look at it is I want, I don't want to exclude anyone from the watershed, whether it's hunters or anyone using the trails on the watershed recreationally, so I think as, as written and then with the modification that um, Commissioner Davis suggested and then Commissioner O'Donnell's recommendation on the, on the tree stands. It makes sense to me, so thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions or concerns from the board at this time? Okay. Hearing none, I'll turn to, to the public comment, or is there anybody here who'd like to weigh in with public comment related to this item? Okay. Hearing none, then moving forward. So the modi- the modifications we're looking at relate to um, access for public safety and emergency responders. And uh, removal for a year to pilot the idea of required removal of temporary tree stands.
Yes, I will strike, I'll add the emergency vehicles and I will strike. The tree stands are only allowed to be put up in two weeks, um, and we can reevaluate that in, in a year.
Terrific, okay, thank you. Um, so. Is there a motion to accept? Want to get the proper name, sorry. Uh, to accept policy twenty one dash zero one, hunting and recreational use at Rainbow Lake slash Emmitsburg watershed.
I assume.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further dis- Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposition? The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We now turn to agenda item number seven. I believe our last item. And this is, uh, related to parkland development, for lack of a better summary. Uh, staff, is there a better descriptor?
Yeah, um, if you want.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Golden, I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Say, I can take it over if you'd like and.
Yes, sir. Please do.
So, um, in January of twenty twenty-one, uh, we passed an ordinance that requires residential, new residential development to provide parkland or pay a fee in lieu. We've always had a fee in lieu, or excuse me, we've always had a fee associated with new residential developments. However, now we have a requirement. So we're asking the board, we, well, actually, a developer has come for us and is looking to, or they are looking to put forty-nine single-family dwellings along Irish Town Road. This is considered Emmett Ridge Two, for all of you that remember this old development back in the nineties. It was originally approved. Um, so the board shall determine if public or private parkland is to be required or require the developer to pay a fee in lieu of, which totals fifty-eight thousand dollars. Town staff and the mayor are recommending a fee in lieu of, and I'll let the mayor, um, discuss what he's looking to do with some of that money to help, offset some of the costs for the North Gate community with the new residence, parks and everything. However, uh, we do have the developer on the phone here, I think one or two people from developers are here to answer any questions and maybe they can explain why they'd rather pay the fee in lieu instead of developing parkland. Uh, Tom, I see you're on the phone. Do you have anything to add? I guess he doesn't think, add, so, uh, requesting the board, uh, make them pay the fee in lieu instead of go.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, do you have any, uh, comments on this or are you comfortable with Mr. Golden's presentation?
Excuse me, it's going very well. We'll just wait for Mr. Horton.
Okay.
Mr. Horton, the, the company's called Horton. So it would be Tom, I think it's Miss Horton.
Is, is there anybody in the meeting representing D.R. Horton? Do we have anybody in the meeting representing D.R. Horton at this time? Mr. Golden, are you aware of anybody representing them at this time?
Yeah, there are actually two people in the meeting. Whatever, um, excuse the length, maybe they tuned out. Regardless, um, they need to know a concrete decision to make in order to be able to process development. Uh, fee in lieu will be, uh, due at the time of the final plan approval and for the final plan, uh, submitted to the county for, uh, rec- recording.
Mr. Golden, I apologize, but you, you've broken up on my end. I, I don't know if it's my connection or, or yours, but I'm having a hard time.
It's not just you. It's, he's, it's very, it's very hard. He's, he's speaking clearly, but I think it's just his, um, his connection's a little spotty. It, it's, it's breaking in and out.
Okay.
Can you hear me better now? Is it looking better now?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I, I don't know if it's a competing user on your Wi-Fi or, or something, but yes, give it, give it another run if you'd be kind.
So, yeah, we have two people in the meeting. I can see from the list that represent D.R. Horton. Um, I'm guessing they tuned out due to the length of the meeting. So however, we do need a concrete decision if possible from the board tonight to either require them to do the required parkland or to pay the fee in lieu of, and town staff and the mayor are recommending the fee in lieu of at this time.
Any questions for staff based on what we're hearing so far?
Yeah, I need clarification on something. I, and I don't know, maybe this developer, um, has other ideas, but my understanding was potentially that the, the houses that were to be built in Emmett Ridge Two were those geared more for, um, people fresh out of college, uh, potentially younger individuals than who could be starting up families. And I'm thinking, I think young families, I think parks. So is that still the plan?
It's not. Um, there was a developer that was going to, put quote unquote affordable housing in this location. They backed out of the contracts, from my understanding. So now there's a new developer. Um, I, obviously I think they want to provide affordable housing, but it's not going to be your government-supported, um, affordable housing.
Mr. Golden, do you have the capacity to contact them so we can hear from them? Like, do you have a phone number where you could reach them so they can return?
I do not. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, Mr., sorry, Mr. Ritz, I didn't mean to interrupt. Uh, Mr. Ritz, any further questions?
Um, no, I just, I just remembered that. I mean, even if it's single-family homes, it's still potential for, um, children. You know, I'm a former resident of, of Emmett Ridge Two. There is a park in North Gate currently that's really only meant for North Gate residents that's maintained by their homeowners association.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, are you, are you still there, everyone?
Oh, there we have somebody.
Hi, hi, I'm Holly Tompkins from D.R. Horton. We are having some connection issues. Much apologies. Much apologies. We, we are in favor of the fee in lieu. So, uh, that, that's where, that's where we are. I, I apologize for our connection issues.
Terrific. Okay, thank you for weighing in. If you could, uh, hang out, because we, we have some other commissioners who might have questions in addition to Mr. Ritz. Mr. Ritz, do you have other questions at this time?
No, I'm just curious to hear from, from the potential developer and from the mayor and if any, uh, public comment as well.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any questions from other commissioners for Horton at this time?
Where, yeah, where was the money going to? North Gate Park?
Yes, um, I'll let Mr. Mayor talk about that more. He, you know, obviously there's going to be forty-nine new homes uh, over there in that area. So we expect the, those residents to use North Gate Park. And, um, Mr. Ritz is correct that the North Gate HOA currently is responsible for maintenance and everything else for that park. Um, we're going to work with H, H.R. Horton and try to, if it's legal, um, and if it's possible and if the North Gate HOA approves, um, to possibly add those forty-nine dwellings over to the North Gate, um, HOA. As, you know, this is an extension of, of North Gate. And originally, looking at plans back in the nineties, they would have been a part of the HOA. Um, but, you know, that's a discussion we'll have with the, um, developer and also the North Gate HOA, which we have started preliminary talks with, um, Claggett Enterprises regarding that. The mayor had a suggestion, a suggested donation of twenty thousand dollars from this fee in lieu to the North Gate HOA, um, in order to help them upkeep and, you know, improve their park if so need be.
Well, the forty-nine houses that are added into the, to the new development would be, would probably have their fees go down. Would that be correct to say?
I.
Forty-nine houses, eh?
I don't think the fees would go down. However, you know, their, their, their fund would be more stable. Their capital funds would be more stable. Because I, I know, I was talking with, uh, Claggett Enterprises today and those single families do pay higher rates than the duplexes in North Gate currently. So it would definitely be a benefit to them in our opinion.
Okay. And taking care of all the maintenance of the park.
Correct. And Claggett, uh, reached, has reached out to their attorney and they're gonna, they're gonna see if it would be able to work. And obviously we'll have to definitely reach out with Horton to see if, you know, we can.
Uh, north, excuse me, uh, north.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
North, come in, um, ma- uh, Commissioner Tim.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, um, North Gate would, uh, if, if that, if we did this, you know, that we, let's see that there, people are contributing to them. There, there are some indications of having problems in collecting their fees. And also they have to recognize that the second pond that, um, will be the responsibility of the developer on Emmett Ridge to, um, bring up the stuff, uh, will be assumed by the HOA. So, um, that's just, there's a lot of little intricacies here that have to go and if they have to say yes and somebody could possibly say no, and, uh, we have to, we have a little go back. We really respect the community of North Gate. And we want to do everything possible to give them their second entryway out of here. It was given up in the early nineties, uh, and, uh, so that they would be trapped when there was a storm, flash flooding. And, uh, uh, this is a way to bring that access to it, uh, to those things, those citizens. So, um, we, we just got a lot of little things to work out and this lawyer's got to call that lawyer and, and, and we just have to see and we have to see. Horton Company is, is amenable to that.
Thank you, sir. Um, any other?
Mr. Yeah, Mr. President.
Go for it. Yes, sir.
So I, I'll ask the question and maybe nobody else wants to address it is why? Why, why avoid the, the, the parklands and pay the fee instead? What is this for a profitability standpoint that they plan on putting more houses in because of the land that would be used? Or is this for something else? Because, I mean, I think that's a pretty obvious question. Nobody wants to ask right now.
Yeah, I mean, I can kind of address that, but then I'll, you know, I'll gear it over to.
Could we less, could we allow the, the Horton representative to weigh in on that? Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Ms. Tompkins, I'm sorry, did I say that properly or is it Thomas? I'm afraid I didn't hear it properly. Uh-oh. Holly? Sorry. I don't like to be so informal.
Yes, yes. Yes, it is Holly Tompkins. Yes, yes. Griffin Burns and Tom Barr are also on this call and they are having some difficulties trying to, to unmute. I don't know if it's because they might be on phones versus Zoom call. And I apologize for our technical difficulties.
Okay, so did, were you able to hear Mr. Burns's question?
I, I heard part of it.
Mr. Burns, would you like to repeat your question if you would, please?
Yeah, I, I think it's the obvious question is why are you seeking in lieu of instead of actually putting the, uh, the parkland in? Uh, is this a profitability standpoint where you can now add more houses to this development? Or is there something else to this? Uh, I mean, I think it's a obvious question why we're avoiding putting the parkland in and looking to pay the fee instead of, um, you know, anything. And is this because now you can add more properties or what the, the ultimate plan is?
Can you hear me now, Zach?
Tom.
There is, there's Tom.
I am so sorry. I've been trying to unmute and I did. I was dialed in. I wasn't on the Zoom call itself. I was on a number. I apologize. I could not unmute. Um, first of all, I did want to make one correction to go back a little bit. Um, there are only forty-six lots here. They're not forty-nine. Or forty-eight, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's forty-eight, forty-eight lots.
Tom, could you weigh in on, and I'm sorry to be so informal. Could you weigh in on Mr. Burns's question regarding why Horton is opting for fee versus to build park on property?
Yes, so on this particular piece, um, Emmett Ridge, we purchased this as a, uh, an approved plan, an expired approved plan, but an approved plan. And this particular piece, um, didn't have any place set aside for park. There is a wetlands area there, um, that is the only open space there on the, uh, don't know my directions there on Ironside Road, but if you're facing the community on the very right side, uh, aren't, um, I'm sorry, Irish Town Road. There's some wetlands there, but it doesn't appear that that would meet your park guidelines based on your ordinance.
So the, the formula is too restrictive. Is that, is that a summary of what you're saying? Is that accurate to surmise that?
Yeah, definitely. Definitely for that particular piece, that's correct.
Okay. Well, that, that's an interesting thought. Mr. Mr. Burns, any other items?
No, so wha- what I'm just unclear of is obviously this was a plot of land that was previously designated in the year late, late eighties, early nineties for forty-six homes. Uh, that's obviously expired. Has that never changed in that time? Nothing's ever changed in regards to this. We have these, we, you know, we obviously have new developments that came in. We have new rules, regulations and everything like that, but we're still following the same original plot plans from, uh, what could be thirty years ago plus.
Got a question for me. I'm sorry.
I think it's a general question. That, that might be directed at town staff. That could be directed at just about anybody at this point.
Mr. Golden, I think, well, we'll ask you to look, uh, look into that one. Could you share any thoughts?
I can answer. Um, du- due to our comprehensive plan, uh, you know, showing those two stub streets going out to Irish Town Road, developer is willing, able to do that. So in order to properly, you know, get the amount of, uh, lots that's going to be make the, the pro, you know, the project not a negative, you know, they need to make some kind of a money. And in order to do those two stub streets and there's a significant amount of improvements along Irish Town Road, to the sum of, you know, from what I've heard from other developers, over a million dollars. You know, that includes water lines, sewer lines, sidewalks, street trees. Um, so that bridge, the small culvert bridge is going to need to be widened. Um, so that is just, you know, come, some of the reasons why staff supporting, you know, the, the fee in lieu of instead, um, you know, as they, if they would take more lots out in order to make, in order to make, uh, the park, it's going to make the, the project not work. And, um, you know, there's been multiple developers that have looked at this and backed out due to the cost. So, you know, we're very happy that Horton's come, stepped in at a staff level, you know, in order to finish this development, development, especially for that safety standard for the, the roads, finishing the roads out to Irish Town Road. So that's my long-winded answer.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's good to hear. Thank you. Mr. Burns, anything further on your end?
No, that answers my question.
Okay, thank you. So a, a question I have relates to the model regarding how the properties are going to be sold. Today Horton was on the front page of the Wall Street Journal in a development in Conroe, Texas. And Horton's model, it sounds like, if I understood the article correctly, was to build a hundred and twenty-four properties and then rent all of them and then sell them to another rental management company. And I'm wondering i- if that's Horton's intent in Emmitsburg at this time.
No, sir, not for this property. We do have a build-to-rent, um, model that, um, D.R. Horton has, um, developed here in the last few years. It's been very successful around the country. We, we will be doing it in the mid-Atlantic region, but that's not what Emmett Ridge is about. Single families per se.
Terrific. Okay, well, that, that's definitely encouraging. The other item is I appreciate you sticking with us through the process tonight. Technology is always our friend, as we can see, but nevertheless, um, I appreciate your candor on that and, uh, And, uh, I'll ask if any other commissioners or anybody has comment or question from the board or the elected before I go with public question. Okay, so hearing none from the board, uh, if there's anyone in interested in public comment at this time, uh, please direct your questions toward the board. And we'll move forward from there at this time if anybody has questions.
I have a question I'd like to ask.
Ms. Walbrecker, good evening.
Hello, Diane Walbrecker, five thirty-five West Main Street. Um, I think it's very important that we get a second entrance, uh, up there, so I applaud that effort. What's to and and thank you for bringing up that article. Commissioner O'Donnell, I hadn't seen that, but what's to restrict Horton from using that model? Is there, are there any, uh, restrictions in what we're planning or the comp plan that would restrict that model? Because I think that would be very damaging in our town.
I I will turn that over to Mister Golden, but I suspect we have no ordinances that relate to that model as it's reasonably new. I think the only thing close would be a lot of private companies purchased a lot of distressed properties and in in a mortgage sense, like upside down or underwater or foreclosures. But this is the first I'm aware of this model at at such a wide scale. But I I I'll be quiet. Mister Golden, this is for you, I would imagine. Sorry.
We cannot prohibit a developer from building houses and renting them. You know, that would be against state law. So they 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 do have every right to do that if they so please. Um, however, with that said, uh, the planning commission does have the authority to deny this development. You know, would that be beneficial for the town? I don't know. That's not my answer to do, but that was a possibility.
Thank you for the answer.
Sure, okay. Any other questions from the community at this time?
Yes. Hi, yes, this is Ron Lynn, uh, to Irish Town Court in Emmitsburg, and I am in Emmet Ridge, I am in Emmet Ridge too. Um, one of my first questions, Mister President, is why wasn't the people up here, uh, left known about the HOA? And talking with Northgate because, um, I've heard quite a few complaints about the Northgate, um, HOA. And I have other questions, uh, after that. After you can answer that.
I don't know that I can speak to why the HOA became inactive, um.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking, Mister President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm asking, I'm asking, uh, because they said they're in talks now with the HOA and Northgate. I've been up here almost, my wife and I have been up here almost twenty four years. And now we're just finding out tonight that you've that the town's been in talks with, uh, Northgate. And no respect for the people up here, the something doesn't sound right.
Okay, um, Mister Golden, could you possibly give us, uh, an overview or maybe a a a summary timeline?
Yeah.
Conversations, if that's possible?
Absolutely. Uh, we literally were in contact with the HOA president today. That was the first contact we had with the HOA. So there's nothing, you know, going on behind the scenes. We're not, you know, plotting, you know, add them to your HOA. That's a decision of the HOA and only the HOA. So, you know, once that is gets approved, once, uh, we I I spoke with the HOA president today briefly via email, just seeing if that was a possibility, if the HOA would even be interested. She still needs to bring that to the HOA's board for a decision. So, you know, it it was never our intent to go behind anyone's backs. It was literally just to see if they would be interested, which he's going to bring forth to you guys, you know. Horton may even say they don't want to do it. So, I mean, it might be a moot point.
Regarding the HOA, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Um, does that mean then, Mister President, that we'll we'll have our own HOA if that if they do, uh, turn that down?
I believe so. Let me let me reference Mister Golden on the the framework there. Is that accurate, Mister Golden?
Yeah, and that was the purpose of our conversation today. Um, the HOA is going to have to reach out to their attorney and, you know, determine that.
Okay, so. Sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Just for clarification, I want to make sure I'm I'm we're talking apples to apples. So we're talking about the HOA for two separate entities and potentially a third. Is that correct?
No.
No, okay.
Right, right now, uh, there's a Northgate HOA. And Mister Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, do you pay into that HOA?
No, no, we don't know. Um, if I if I could just give you a moment, um, the 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 p- the company that owned the development board disbanded our HOA, uh, like twenty years ago.
Okay, see, see, these are answers. I I don't know. This is the reason why we reached out to the HOA president to, you know, see if they would even be interested. So I don't know those answers, Mister Lynn, tonight.
And then my just one more question, then, uh, will they provide the all the utilities like, uh, gas, water? Because some of the people up here are interested in gas, but we're in the old, uh, we're in the the beginning of the, uh, old development.
You'd have to ask, I'm not sure, um, Tom.
All right, um, I was muted there, but, uh, um, we didn't have any, um, plans to extend utilities past our lots. I'm not sure exactly.
That's that's cool. I was just, you know, it was more, I guess, more or less a curiosity. But, um, that that's cool, because like you say, there's, uh, just another, uh, home up here. We've been up here pretty much since, uh, the 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 original development started. That's all.
Okay, Mi- Mister Lynn, thank you. I I appreciate your patience with me trying to get clarification.
Not a problem. I thank you all for the information.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, so Mister Golden, moving forward, we're now looking for the board's consideration of this item. Is that correct?
Correct. Uh, there, you know, Tom said forty eight lot, you know, you never know, it may change, so we're just asking the board to approve, uh, any developer, just in case this would fall through, to pay a fee in lieu of instead of park development. So it doesn't have to be specific to fifty thousand to E R H Horton, um, D R Horton, excuse me. It just to pay the fee in lieu of instead of park development once Emmett Ridge two gets developed.
Okay, so we're modifying it then from what's presented in the bold on the agenda, correct?
Correct. I was told forty nine dwellings from their engineer, so it's news to me that it decreased to forty eight. Um, so that is why we're going to have to modify that.
Okay. So at this time, um, I look for a motion from the board. And I'm trying to get the right phrasing here, Mister Golden, because it's a a layered item here. So a motion from the board to allow the developer to pay a fee in lieu of park. Do we need to identify the parcel or rather the the community? Emmett Ridge?
Correct.
Emmett Ridge two, excuse me, okay, so. Uh, Ms. Willis, is that a no, is that proper language for you for a motion to satisfy this this item?
Yeah, I think, um, the approval of the developer to pay a fee in lieu for, uh, fee in lieu of a parkland for Emmet Emmett Ridge two along Irish Town Road.
Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate the clarification there. So is there such a motion coming forward from a board member at this time?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for this motion? Commissioner Sweeney, I I I, you were on mute?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, motions been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion at this time from the board?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, other than, hey, you know, we have a potential developer. We've been looking for years, um, to get this done. And now they're here and we really need the second entrance to the Emmet Ridge two slash Northgate developments. I'm still failing to see a compelling reason why we're not requiring the park to be built. It sounds to me that if we do the fee in lieu of, we're looking at potentially, I think Zach alluded to it, twenty thousand dollars. Um, I think the mayor stated that he was going to put that towards the park in Northgate, improvements for that, so both communities then could use that part. But I I'm 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 still failing to see the the reason, a compelling reason to to grant the fee in lieu of.
Okay, so fur- furthering the discussion, let me extrapolate a little bit. Mister Golden would, how many parcels might be compromised through the formula that we have at this time for Emmett Ridge two for for the potential developer? Like, what what do they lose? Could you quantify that?
I'm gonna have to turn it over to D R Horton to defend that. Um, I haven't seen any plans at all.
Well, I I I don't need to defend, I I I, that's strong language, but just a thought behind that. That's kind of what I'm looking for. So either Tom or Holly, could you perhaps weigh in on that? Like, if if you would lose multiple parcels on this or something?
Yeah, excuse me, sure, we, um, just in reviewing your, um, requirements for actually was, uh, not only the the requirements, but what the description of, um, quote unquote, park is, um, we would lose approximately two lots. It wouldn't be a, well, it it would be a whole two lots because of your, um, because of the different restrictions on lot sizes, but yes, it would be two lots.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, Mister Ritz, does that provide you further insight?
Yes, you know, from a business perspective, I I certainly can understand that. Um, I guess my my main concern though is, you know, potential for, uh, families, obviously, to be moving in and there's really nothing really nothing up there for them in that that section of town. Other than the Northgate Park, which then, if they're not really part of that community, they're really not permitted to use that park. I know that gets abused a lot, but, um, however, you know, um, there's two sides to it. I'm just just looking at it that way.
I I have one more comment. Um, when we presented the park ordinance back in January, uh, I presented a study that was done by, um, the s- the state and also the county. And this area in particular, it showed that the park equity was, um, was in the green. So that means we've had these, the residents of this area have more than enough park per the state's park requirement. Now, the only areas that weren't in the park equity that met that criteria was Pembroke and also, um, you know, potential development east of US fifteen. So that's another, you know, reason why the mayor and staff, you know, agree that, you know, this would be preferable than a park.
Just one more, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mister Davis, go ahead.
Uh, what I would like to hope would have happened is that they can can add on to the, uh, the Northgate Park and instead of having, uh, a little park over there with some more swing sets in the new development, that they might be able to expand the current one to maybe add a little basketball net or something like that to give more options for both developments. And that's what I would would hope for. That's the reason I'm supporting this.
Thank you, sir. Um, anybody else in further discussion?
I would just add that that was staff's, uh, to reiterate what Commissioner Davis said, that was myself and Zach's and the mayor's, uh, feeling behind supporting this was the ability to expand Northgate's playground with the help of of D R Horton. And that was our feeling that it that would be, instead of having two small playgrounds, you have one larger one with a lot more amenities would be more beneficial to, um, all our residents.
What if the Northgate HOA though states that residents of Emmet Ridge can't use it? Because they're not part of their community. They're not part of their development, so to speak.
Well, then they would have, they would have to use the community park in the memorial park like everyone else in Townhouse two.
Correct.
We just hope they pick up your philosophy of being good neighbors.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, I appreciate that.
Wow.
Um.
Hey, yeah. Hey, Zach, can I ask one question?
Yes.
So the park that you're talking about doing some improvements for, um, is that not a dedicated to the public park? Is that not an Emmitsburg park that's been dedicated?
I'm sorry, Tim, I overstepped it.
No, you didn't. Yeah, that's probably fine. Uh, please feel free to answer the question.
Um, uh, Tom, yes, that is a private park operated by their HOA. However, you know, people do break the rules. There are, you know, there aren't park police or anything that go out, um, but, yes, that's a private park.
And to me, that would be a lot easier if if it wasn't. And I I understand Commissioner Sweeney's statement, you know, well, then they just got to use the community memorial parks like everybody else. I just know going forward, we were looking at new developments and hoping to incorporate, um, even if it was a pocket park, so to speak.
Right.
Um, I I know that that was our, I know that was the planning commission was looking at that as well, um, and the intent of the planning commission. And then, uh, I understood the board in general felt that way too. Maybe I was incorrect.
No, Mister Ritz, I I I think you you caught the spirit of it and and that's, I think, where we have to go back and look at the, uh, the formula we're using, because my initial intent in proposing this was literally just that, where it would be a half lot um, and dedicated to a focal point for our community. So there'd be a gathering place in that community. And M- Mister Sweeney makes a good point that, yes, a lot of neighborhoods, uh, rely on community park, but also if you look at Silo Hill, they do have a small park there. Um, Emmett Gardens has its own small park there. Uh, I just think it was a failure in the newer developments to not have that in place. So that that's that's where I was coming from. Um, so I I think we we really have to look at the i- i- it would be wise, I think, to revisit the ordinance at a future time, but, uh, the vote is is upon us as we, there's been a call for a vote. Um, is there any further discussion related to this item?
I'll add my two cents, uh, and why I'm gonna, um, why I'm voting the way I am is, uh, we proposed this new ordinance back in, I believe it was January, and the first developer to come in is already paying a fee instead of actually doing the, um, uh, parkland, so I will vote against this.
Okay, so I'll call to vote. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all against, please say nay or.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay? So the motion does not pass two to three. Uh, Commissioners Sweeney and Davis in favor, Commissioners O'Donnell, Burns, Ritz against.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the next option now is to require either a private park or a public park.
Okay, now is that something that we are taking on this moment?
Yeah, the it reads either to pay a fee in lieu of or to do a private or public park.
Okay. So Mister Golden, is there anything more we need to know about these qualifications?
It's, uh, Mister. Mister President, before you even answer that question, before you even answer the question, I think that there's there's more to this than what I think we're even addressing right now is no one has discussed with Northgate what the plan was, because we're all discussing, oh, well, we'll give them money to expand on it and do this and do that. There's been a conversation, as Mister Golden said, started today. So for us to even have brought this with no further information, I think is is bad on our part in that, okay, we're. is bad on our part in that, okay, we're asking for approval of, um, in lieu of to then donate money to Northgate, which we do not know if they're going to accept, which we do not know if they're going to expand upon their park. We don't know anything of that nature and we're, we were being forced to make all of these decisions this evening, which none of us have answers for at this time.
Mr. Burns, I, I definitely agree with what you're saying and I'm, I'm, I want to try to compose some thoughts here. Um, but first, Mr. Golden, I did put the question forward, so before we consider a vote, just for the sake of clarification, so we have the authority in this circumstance therefore to dictate to the developer potentially in the creation of a park would be a private park or a public park. So private meaning HOA governed, is that correct?
Correct. So, uh,
Okay.
All the, the ordinance reads, they will be required to do a park as the formula states in the, the ordinance. So either it's going to be a private or a public park. And I just want to kind of clarify, I, this sounds like there's some contention with our contacting the HOA today. It was just, uh, you know, spot of the moment. Maybe H, maybe Northgate would want them to join their HOA to help with the fees. It was, it was
So, so I'm, I want to go forward and I'm gonna kind of, my feeling is we need to revisit this issue with more information and, and here's where I'm coming from. I think those conversations are important. I think we're being potentially presumptuous, but at the same time, the, the spirit of the ordinance as it was put forward was not to penalize a developer by making them yield so many home sites. I mean, we want Horton, should they choose to move forward and we would like that, we want them to make a reasonable, you know, return on their investment in our community. This is something that we value. While at the same time, we're trying to protect a standard of living, a quality of life where a neighborhood does have a focal point. So, Mr. Golden, I hate to put you in the hot seat, you know, using Mr. Ritz's term, but do we have the capacity to reduce the formula so we could require a home lot? I mean, is, is it a, I think we used like a square footage formula, if I'm not mistaken, last time based on quantity of, of parcels. But do we have recourse on that where it could be smaller? And of course I don't want to walk away from, you know, fee, but, uh, the, the spirit of what we were looking for was not to penalize a developer, but to enhance the quality of life of those future residents.
Sure. So, yeah, we, anything you want. However, just thinking ahead, you know, as larger developments, we're really going to cut our, in my opinion, we're going to cut ourselves short. You know, we're going to say you only need to do one or two lots. Well, if the development over it fairly farmed develops out fully, for example, maybe 175 houses and we only have one tiny little pocket park, we're really going to cut ourselves short. But as Kathy says, we can do whatever you guys want. I'm happy to do anything.
You make a persuasive argument, sir.
Well, we're also requiring the, uh, the developer to do major upgrades on Irish Town Road, also riding and also fixing the bridge. So, you know, they're going to be having to spend a lot of, a million dollars on fixing all that up.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, you wanted to weigh in. Mr. Sweeney, I'm sorry. Was that your full statement? I apologize.
Yes, well, you know, there's the question is, do we need another tot lot right there? Do we need another, another park there when we have more park land and you can shake a stick at that we needs to be used? Anyways, Memorial Park and, and Community Park need to be utilized more because it, you know, you know, Emmett Ridge two is right in the center of town.
Mr. Sweeney, uh, I'm going to get to the mayor in a moment. So Mr. Mayor, just saying, uh, in my opinion, yes, we do because it's a focal point for the neighborhood for the children. And in the new developments, I know, I'll rephrase that, in the newer developments, uh, exclusive of Southgate, which is a, a, a joining community park, there is nothing like that available for, for families. And it's, it's a tragedy because a lot of these households don't know their neighbors. They don't know each other's children. And it's, it's not by, you know, malice, it's just by lack of that opportunity. So that's why I feel it's valuable. Um, I, I've experienced that myself here with my own kids and I, I hear this from neighbors that one of the regrets they have about this neighborhood and, and the Pembroke neighborhood, uh, sorry, the Brookfield neighborhood i- is that lack of common community space. So I, I totally agree with you. We are, we're very fortunate to have Community Park, for sure. And, you know, uh, the, the whole baseball softball complex as well. I mean, those are invaluable. But for community building, there's that commonality that we're missing. So that's, that's why I brought this forward and I thought it was a unanimous vote when we did it, I thought, but we're, we're in a curious circumstance here, you know, here and now. I, I'll, I'll come back in a second. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you. The, the real question here is can Horton, uh, pay a deed, uh, pay a fee in lieu of, uh, developing a tot lot? And I have no idea exactly what a, a pocket park it is, is, but, uh, and I, uh, about 10 years ago, we asked subdivisions if, if they would like to have a tot lot and, and they've said flat out, no, because we have a, we have an HOA and we don't want those fees to go up. They, uh, two prominent, uh, one that's, um, morphing that way and another one's very prominent in the area. So the importance real request is forget, forget what I said. I, I wanted, I've been talking to, uh, Northgate for quite a while about their problem and how it's so hard. There's one person who's managing the whole, there, there's Claggett that's out there, but there's one person who's been fully bearing up all the responsibility for the HOA and, uh, she's exhausted and, uh, that's, that is the only, only park in town we have where an HOA pays, pays for it. And 70% of their HOA fees go to maintaining that park, which is used by people up and down Norse, Norseton, federal. And, uh, I think it would probably be used by people in Emmett Ridge. So what I was trying to accommodate, if we, you can't do this development linearly. I know not many of you have done this, but I have. There's a lot of things that have to be pulled together before it gets to a linear place where we can plan and we talk that it, this works here and then we do this, we do that and everything like that. You don't, development's not that way. Every, every day they're surprised. When they, when they dig off, want to go dig a basement like, uh, Ryan Holmes just found out up in the the circle up there in Brookfield, uh, oh, wow, we didn't know there's all this rock there. And they've had to beat all the rock out and then they'll go somewhere else. So, you know, it's, it's something else. You know, you never know what's under the ground. You never know what's there. Pocket park, um, they'll be right back at you wanting you to, uh, the town to take it over. And, uh, and we will have to do equitably, it's a big word right now, equitable. And it's not fair for everybody in Northgate to pay for their, their park if no one else is paying for theirs. And, uh, that, that's a responsibility, but forget doing anything with Northgate. That, that's just some sensibility I have for all those people live there. Uh, quietly and, and wonderful people. Uh, the, the question here is can Horton pay a fee in lieu of, uh, of developing a pocket park? And, uh, I've been around to a lot of park, little parks we have here. And I've never seen them used. I know I'm not right there at the right time, but I do a lot of driving around town. I'm trying to take, uh, John Holliger's, Holliger's, uh, responsibilities over to a certain extent, but, um, forget giving a money to Northgate, uh, that, that will be addressed soon. And, um, uh, we'll have to make some budgetary things or whatever, but, uh, that, that, that can't go on. And I was trying to see, maybe we could help these out, put these things together. But gentlemen, it's not linear. Not at all development. There's so many things going on here with attorneys, engineers and soil tests and roads and dealing with the town. They want a pipe and they want to wind the bridge and they got to do this. All this stuff has got somewhere. There's got to be a margin in for them to make some money. And what they're going to lose is to lots maybe for a pocket park, which we don't even know exactly what that is. And yes, they can give the land. Uh, an HOA will have to be assembled and, and to take care of that. And they'll probably run into the same things that, um, Northgate is too. But that, that's my two cents. Uh, it's one question. Not forget Northgate and all that stuff. We will deal with that soon, but not now. And, uh, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oh, Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Let me hear from the commissioner and, and, and Mr., Mr. Tom, I'm sorry, I don't have your last name. We, we'll get to you next. I, I promise you. Mr. Burns, go ahead.
So my, my question ultimately becomes then, as, as the mayor is saying, building is not linear. I, I understand that there's going to be things that pop up. Why are we even having this conversation tonight then? Because obviously there are so many unknowns that have yet to be answered in regards to any of this. We're throwing, we're throwing out numbers to join Northgate. We're not talking to HOAs. We have members of this. Just like the mayor just said, we have all these questions that need to be answered and things that pop up. Well, I'm just curious as to why right now we're trying to determine this entire thing when there's still all those unknown questions. And now we're put in a situation where we're having to just tell them tonight that they have to build a pocket park. To me, I'm not sure why this was even brought to the table tonight when there are still so many things that have yet to be answered.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tom from Horton, sir, go ahead.
Yes, um, and I appreciate all the comments. I appreciate the mayor's comments and the concerns for the neighboring communities. And, you know, we're here to be a partner with Emmitsburg, as we've said in our meetings before. What I'd like to do at this point, which I think maybe help everybody is, is I would like to table this. And I would hope that we could get on next month's agenda, but I think we could definitely, um, meet and come to, you know, first of all, you know, we've got plenty of comments tonight. We, we have an understanding of some of the wishes and needs. Why don't we get together and see what we can do? Because quite frankly, it, it's not about the dollars here at all, guys. Um, the, the, you know, the, the, you know, close to 60,000 versus the pocket park. It's really about room on there and it's based on, you know, similar to what the mayor said. We have a lot of designs of a lot of different sized communities and typically a community of this size wouldn't even get a tot lot because typically in our situation, it's not being handed over to a jurisdiction. HOA would have to manage it, reserve fund it and everything else. And a, a small community of this nature just wouldn't be able to afford that. And at some point, you know, it would disappear because it wouldn't be managed. It wouldn't be taken care of, wouldn't be maintained. So we don't like to leave a community in a situation to where the HOA can't manage what we put in and can't, you know, and put a big burden on homeowner. So why don't we table this? And like I said, I, I know, I know it's very difficult to get on your agendas. I really appreciate you guys squeezing us in for this one. But if we could, you know, spend the next couple of weeks discussing this, I think we can all come, I think we can definitely help you, help out. Um, and because I feel like we, we're kind of like looked at the bad guy right now, but really it's because we feel like we only have a couple of options here. And I feel like if there was other ways or, you know, that we can do things and, and we're, we're willing to think way out the box here, but, um, you know, we're not here to break rules either. So, um, if, if we could do that, that would be my suggestion.
And I, I just want to jump in here and state, um, I do not feel that you're the bad guy at all. Um, I, I'm pretty sure the other, so that commissioners feel the same way. I suggest though, if we do table this to a future meeting, that we, um, could possibly make this agenda item number one. Just because, you know, everybody representing the developer and I, you know, had to, had to sit through a lot, just, I, just, just a a common courtesy thing. I, I feel that would be a really good idea.
President Max.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
I, I just want to kind of caution this a little bit. Um, Tom, I know you have deadlines and I know that is why we put this on tonight's meeting because, you know, your contract supposedly supposed to end two weeks in order to make a decision one way or the other. Um, if, if you're a kind of, you're kind of alluding to maybe changing some things and maybe possibly changing some things in the code um, to make it smaller with a tot lot, just understand that's going to take at least three months for our code process. So I just kind of want to make the board aware is that is of that as well. If we're looking to reduce the size of the tot lots, you know, there's, there's so many different variants, just as I said before. You know, this is Emmett Ridge two is its own unique beast, you know, it, for some reason, it, in the nineties, it was let go. And, you know, the, the land's kind of, it's landlocked. So new developments, you're going to have bigger parks. What I'm trying to say is just, please be aware of the consequences of changing it for future developments because this is only one development. And I want, I want Tom to be aware of, of the timeline. You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna allow it to come back next month, I think Tom should have something prepared showing, you know, where the, the park will go. Um, you know, it has to meet our code, how it's currently states. Unless, you know, the board wants to do an amendment, which we can go through that process, but I know, Tom, I don't know if that's going to kill your timeline and not make this project work. Um, I don't want to kill the project.
And I appreciate that, Zach. And I, I would hope, you know, based on Mr. O'Donnell's, uh, comments and, and the mayor's comments that, um, something can be arranged here, whether, you know, again, we're not looking to get out of it. We just, and we want to make, we want to make something work. Quite frankly, the, the fee in lieu would probably cost us more than the park. In, in actual physical dollars to do the work. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of things to consider there. I do believe that I have, I mean, I have faith in, in, in this system and, and what you guys are doing that I won't, I won't let this affect us one way or another on, um, on, you know, going, going through with this contract. So, um, I will also hope that if it does become some, some kind of an amendment that takes a couple of months, I would hope that we would be able to file, you know, file other things. You know, simultaneously so that we're not having to just, you know, go one after another, after another. I hope it's not treated like an annexation or something like that, just to get a, you know, to get a plan approved.
Yeah, unfortunately we can't, the planning commission can't approve plans that aren't, the code doesn't meet. So unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to move forward with that process.
Mr. Golden, could you clarify what you mean by that? Cause
Yeah, so they're going to be responsible for doing a preliminary subdivision plan and a final subdivision plan, improvement plan. Forest conservation plan. None of those can be approved without showing exactly where the lots are going to go, what size park it's going to be. So it all depends on, on this park. It really does. Um, so we, the planning commission doesn't have the authority to approve a plan with a hypothetical, you know, formula, a formula for the park. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, that make, that, this makes perfect sense. Uh, Tom, I'm bringing this back to you. And again, Tom, what's your last name? I apologize for not knowing this.
Sure. Farr, F A R R, F as in Frank, A R R.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Farr. Um, and I, I just do it for the sake of formality for our meetings. Number one, right, there, there's no bad guy in this equation right now and certainly not you. We do want you in our community. We, we know that you add value. Absolutely. The, the trick we're trying to balance, as you well recognize, is that quality of life piece, you know, a- as we move forward. But at the same time, there's an economic piece that we want, you know, everyone to have the opportunity here, including yourself in your business. So is there flexibility in your timeline regarding what we're trying to get done? Like if you're coming back in a May meeting, uh, what Mr. Golden is laying out is there, there's going to be requirements on our end to make sure we're advertising and meet our public transparency requirements. So we have an inclusive process. I don't want that to stifle Horton, but at the same time, the, the, the way the board has voted tonight, we're, we're trying to hit that balance. Is this something you feel Horton is able to work? Is this something you feel Horton is able to work with?
Well, we can't, we can't adjust our timeline with the seller. That's not an option.
Okay.
But, but I guess what I'm saying is, and Zach, I know you're telling me about your, you know, rules and regulations for processing plans and so forth, and I can appreciate all that. I just feel like that we are, you know, we are trying to do whatever we need to do here and are acting in good faith, you know, trying to move forward here. I would just hope for some kind of reprieve in the process so that we aren't, you know, we can't have a three month delay talking about a $50,000 tot lot or something. I mean, that's just, that's not business sense to anybody, you know?
Right.
So, you know, if we, you know, if, if we can run plans concurrently with or without, or, you know, however that works. But again, I have no problem putting in some type of a small park. But, you know, in our experience with a size this, a community of this size, you're putting a big burden on an HOA unless you're going to take it over. And then if you're going to take it over, you're already heavy green space, that's just more maintenance. And I'm not sure, you know, you're going to be, you're probably going to be maintaining a park that's not going to be used very much. I think there's a lot of sense into maintaining or, you know, to building up other parks and using that same money. But I'm not sure exactly what your park situation is, you know, outside of the one right next door.
Mr. President.
Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
How many houses, do you know how many houses are in Emmett Ridge two now? Zach, do you know that? How many houses are in Emmett Ridge two?
Mr. Lynn would probably know that answer better than me. I would say 10 or so.
And so, and right now they pay no HOA fees.
Correct.
So how can you make them pay HOA fees for a park that they don't want?
Can't.
It's about 16 homes currently.
So if those 16 homes do not want the park there, why would you make the 48 homes put a park there?
Do we, do we know that though? Have we heard from those households or their HOA?
Well, they're having a bad enough time paying for the park. It's in, it's in Northgate now, so what do you think is going to happen to this one?
Wait, are you talking about Emmett Ridge two?
Yes.
Yeah, Emmett Ridge two currently has 16 homes. There, there is no HOA in that community.
They don't have an HOA, that's two separate, two separate groups.
But they would have to pay for the park if he put it in. You know, it wouldn't be just the 48 houses paying for Emmett Ridge two, the other 16 homes will have to pay for it too. They're part of that development.
Well, they wouldn't be part of the HOA though, so it'd only be the 48 homes.
Well, that don't make no sense. So those, if I lived in the number ridge two and I owned one of the older houses, I would use that park too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it will be used by whoever.
Yeah, yeah.
It does not make no sense.
Mr. Davis, yes, sir.
Yeah, just one, one more thing. I like the idea of putting this back on the agenda for May. I understand there are some unanswered questions. And maybe we could have an answer from the Northgate HOA in 30 days. And that might relieve some people. But I can't believe we're letting a couple of swing sets stop us from finishing a development that has been sitting dormant since 1990, whatever.
Right.
Improve infrastructure, improve safety for the current development, improve a bridge problem and many other things. And we're doing this all over a couple of swings. I don't think, I don't think we're, we're thinking this very well, but I would like to see it brought back up in 30 days.
Mr. Davis, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I'm, I think we do have to bring this back to our next agenda. And I think what we should do therefore would be to table the vote regarding the park, whether it be public or private, and that we add that to the agenda. Sorry, we add the updated presentation from DB Horton, sorry, from Horton, pardon me, DR Horton, at our next meeting. And if we could accommodate them as a first item as per Mr. Ritz's request, I think there's value to that also. And then, Mr. Davis, I do agree with you, I do. So.
And then you also contact Emmett Ridge two to see if they're, you know.
Correct. There's, there's a lot of value to bring in this HOA thing. And that's, that's one thing that threw me tonight. I will say quite honestly that by adding the HOA conversation, it definitely, I find myself a little bit unclear on things, so I apologize for that. But to this point, we would need a motion to table the vote related to the park determination.
Can I add one thing, a question for, I'm sorry, you know, their answer may be, we don't want our development to be a part of Northgate. So if that's their answer, we're kind of, you know, I understand you want to table it for a month. I'm in agreeance. But if Horton doesn't want to even start that conversation with Northgate, we're kind of wasting their time and Northgate's time and Northgate's money because Northgate has to reach out to their attorney. And that's going to cost hundreds, if not thousands of dollars to ask questions.
So, Mr. Golden, are you making a proposal for tonight then?
Obviously, I would, I would love a vote, but I don't think you guys are comfortable doing that. I just want to ask Tom, you know, maybe he can't make this, this, this decision tonight. You know, are they even interested in having this Northgate after this conversation?
Well, I don't, I don't know that it's Horton's responsibility to have that conversation. I believe it would be town staff's responsibility to have that conversation.
I agree, because all he's going to do is give us the money and what we do with that money if it's to upgrade the Northgate park. That's up to us. That has nothing to do.
Commissioner O'Donnell, if I could weigh in, I think at the request of DR Horton, excuse me, and the commissioners, that we go ahead and table this for the May meeting. The staff will have more information to come back. There'll be more discussions with the developer. And as Commissioner Davis said, the fee in lieu could possibly go to Northgate, but it could also be used for our other parks. It's not, it's not set in stone where it would, it would be up to the town to decide where that money went after you decide for fee in lieu. Yeah, I think the conversations about Northgate kind of muddled the topic tonight. But I think it's in the best interest right now that we table this till May and have a lot more information to go off of if, and I think that would just suit everybody's needs.
I just want to interject though, I was pretty confident, I heard tonight that the money that we received in lieu of the park would be applied to Northgate's park.
That was just a suggestion.
Okay, I mean, that's why I mentioned it again.
Right, that was a suggestion that it was one place that the monies could go since they are going to be neighboring developments, that there you would have a nice larger park. Because I will agree with what everybody has said, these small tot lots are not being used. The one that we manage in Silo Hill is hardly ever used. But I think it just suits everybody for tonight that we table and move forward. And again, the fee in lieu can go wherever the board would say they would want it to go.
Right, okay. Well, I agree with you there. I'm going to come back to Mr. Farr. Mr. Farr, is it fair, you will, we can't expect you as our first agenda item for our May meeting? Is that fair to say on your part?
Yes, sir.
Terrific, okay. So is there a motion to table the vote related to the public, private park question?
I make a motion to table the vote on the public, private park for Emmett Ridge two.
I second. I second.
Thank you. Motion is made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries five to zero, thank you. All right, so we move forward to setting our agenda for our next meeting. Staff?
Yes, hold on, I believe the mayor would like to say something.
Sure.
In July, we have a, our monthly meeting is scheduled for July 6th, which is a Tuesday after the holiday. I just like to propose that we move that to the next Monday, the 12th of July. That will give everybody notice. Notice we may have, be back here, everybody there. But move it from the 6th to the 12th, so people who are going away and enjoying that long weekend can, or are building into a vacation can go and have it on the 12th, Monday, the 12th.
Do we need an official vote on it or just a consent?
Yes, unanimous, or just, it's fine.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you have it five to zero for your item?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, Ms. Willetts, we turn to you for agenda item number two.
All right, so actually it'd be agenda item number one. I need some direction on what you want that agenda item to be related to the park and fee in lieu with DR Horton and Emmett Ridge two. What, what vote are you actually looking for? Are you looking?
I think we revisit fee in lieu based on Horton's presentation.
I mean, we could essentially keep it the same. It could be the same agenda item if you'd like. The board shall determine if, if the developer may pay a fee in lieu for Emmett Ridge two along Irish Town Road.
Yes, I agree, I like that language. My, my only piece that I'm seeking is to hear from DB Horton because it sounds like they're bringing something forward also. I thought there was that.
Yeah, that always goes underneath where it says, as you can see on our, where it says, "Presentation at Meeting by Town Staff and DR Horton." So, you know, we will include that as the agenda item as well.
Yes, okay. So the language you put forward seems fine to me, yes.
And then, is it appropriate at that time to determine if it's public or private parkland? Is that something that has to be determined at that meeting, Zach?
It's really based on Tom's timeline. I was under the assumption that his contract ended in two weeks. So that's why it was kind of the hurry for tonight. I'll hand that over to Tom if he's still available. I know he said that he can't adjust the seller's timeline, so that's what I would.
I mean, the determination of it being public or private parkland, does that have a bearing? You know, that doesn't have a bearing on the monetary side of it, does it?
No, I don't. Sorry, Mr. Golden, I'll be quiet, go ahead, sir, sorry.
Nope, I'm sorry, no, you're correct, Kathy.
So we could determine and, and, and DR Horton weigh in if I'm misunderstanding that. So we could determine at the next meeting if it's going to be fee in lieu or build the park and then decide at a later date if it needs to be public or private parkland?
Correct, that's, that's a good idea.
Okay, so let's just leave it with the vote on the fee in lieu or the building of the parkland. Okay. That's agenda item number one.
Yes.
Okay. Number two would be the initial presentation of fiscal year 2022 budget. Number three is approval of bid for a three-year fiscal year 22 to 24 trash collection services contract for consideration. Number four, approval of bid to construct small pavilions in E Eugene Myers Community Park near the bandstand for consideration. Number five, approval of ordinance 21-07, town election updates for consideration. And then, number nine, six would be forward ordinance 21-05, update to Title 16 subdivisions to the Planning Commission for Recommendation and set public hearing and final vote for June 7th, 2021 for consideration. Number.
Backing up to number six, Title 16 subdivision.
Right, forward ordinance 21-05, update to the Title 16 subdivisions to the Planning Commission for Recommendation and set public hearing and final vote for June 7th, 2021.
Okay.
All right, number seven would be forward ordinance 21-06, update to Title 17, zoning to the Planning Commission for Recommendation and set public hearing and final vote for June 7th, 2021. And then we have one tentative item that we're not sure it's going to make it on the May 3rd agenda. Would you like that now or can I send it out in an email if it's official?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Is this all for May the 3rd?
Yes.
What about?
I believe it is, yes.
You have a meeting scheduled for April 19th?
Yes, and we're not adding anything else to that.
What's 19th, is that just the budget?
No, I, I, no, that's about the East Emmitsburg, or the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park.
Okay, that's, okay. It didn't say what it was for on, on the agenda this year when I was reading.
19th is for discussion, the location of pump station for Emmitsburg East Industrial Park on the town of Emmitsburg wastewater treatment plant property and discussion of additional requirements of such pump.
Okay, just one agenda item for the 19th?
That's just one, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Sweeney, thank you for asking. So Ms. Willetts, there's no number eight, is that correct?
I have a tentative item. I don't know if it's going to make it for May 3rd. With your, I can send it to the mayor who then will bring it to you if it, if it does, if it is ready by May 3rd.
Terrific, is there a topic you can share at this time or?
Zoning text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Goodness. Okay, so is there a motion to accept the agenda for the May 3rd meeting as presented?
I still move, make a motion to what he said.
Okay, so there's, Mr. Burns, are you seconding?
He said.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Excuse me, all right, so motion is made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Five to zero, yes, okay.
Beat you to it.
Is there a second for Mr. Burns's motion?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. The meeting concludes at 11:40 PM. April 5th meeting, thank you.
Almost April 6th.
Almost, thank you, sir. Good night.
Good night.